To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hascheff, Guston, Zadra, Sveraza, Dorch, Ayazi, Kachel.
Public comment cards?
Thanks for letting me come up and speak. Two weeks ago, I came up to speak about the proposed changes to municipal code, I believe, 513, as it relates to the bar crawls in Reno. Again, my name is Ed Atkins. I run the Reno Zombie Crawl, the Vampire Crawl, and the Superhero Crawl. So I do very serious work. That was a joke. But I'm returning to urge your continued cooperation with the different crawls in Reno. Yesterday, we did conduct, the city conducted a meeting with a bunch of the stakeholders. It didn't get extremely far, but it was great to feel that we are getting our voices heard and that our input is being brought in on this. Personally, I'm not against coming up with a cooperative agreement that would end up in the concept of permitting, but I do want to make sure that it's something that all of us are in agreement on, and I know that not everybody quite has reached anything yet. But a couple of things that were mentioned that I would really to bring to your attention and I think would be really important to this process. One was, we were told that a budget meeting was scraped together where there may be funds that we would be able to apply to in order to ease the burden, especially for up-and-coming events or young events, so that wouldn't squash the dreams of people who are trying to put together similar things and bring people downtown. Also, the development of a flow sheet or a flow chart or a matrix where costs could be associated to specific things when we're going to get a permit. So when you apply for a permit, you'd be able to see if I'm going to do this, this will create this cost. If I'm going to do this, this will create this cost. That would allow us to better predict what we're going up against when we do apply for a permit or when we do go to put together a crawl. It'd also allow us to negotiate or adjust our plans so that we can actually plan for what kind of costs we're going to come up against. I would really, really urge for support in both of those areas. Also, I know that there still is a little bit of disagreement even on the elements that you're going to be looking at today, and I, along with a few other people who run the crawls, would like to urge you to continue tabling this thing till we have the entire thing figured out. So, all of municipal code 513, that was going to be, some of it I know was going to be pushed through that was supposedly, you know, not going to be affecting business. I know that there are some that still feel that the elements that you'll be seeing today still do affect that and should be looked at before being brought in front of you again. So anyway, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you a lot for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for input. Kirby Lamplie.
Afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm Kirby Lamplie. I've been watching the situation with the fire department with great disparity, great sugar in, if you will. It occurs to me, it appears to me, that the county commission has lost its collective mind in standing up its own fire department. It must be terribly expensive, and I'm sure it's costing a lot of precious man-hours for them to do that. It also appears to me that this council has been rather diligent in trying to bring some rationality to this situation, and I appreciate that. However, barring any change before July 1, it's my belief that there should be an automatic aid agreement between the city council and the county commission. To me, failure to have such an agreement would place certain people and property in jeopardy. Concomitantly, an agreement could also, or must also, be included to review the actual operating expenses after a period of time, say, a year, and in order to determine what the actual expenses are and ascertain whether and to what extent any cross-subsidy exists and how to deal with that cross-subsidy. I believe the pending grant for the fire department from the federal government will probably have some impact on the operations of the fire department, and this period of time would allow the parties to actually factor in those expenses in the calculation of any cross-subsidy if one exists. And I believe that in the interim with this type of aid agreement, that the existing citizens of this fine city will receive the protection that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the citizens of Reno under the safer grant we got will be protected very well. That some of the outlying areas that the county has not addressed will be done in the future.
Yes, Mayor, that's really what I was thinking about, those on the margin. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Deney.
Sam Deney, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and I agree wholeheartedly with that man. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate, spent many years flying fighters and bombers, and since then, he's been attending all of these government meetings, and he's on top of all of this stuff. Before I go any further, I want to thank, I want to give kudos to Senator Reed and his partners over there for following Sam's directives and sending all of that money here to help save a bunch of firefighters and maybe even a bunch of homes. Secondly, I ran into a bunch of those crawlers, I guess that crawler guy left. I ran into some of the crawlers over there at Einstein's Coffee Shop, and they invited me to their latest crawl. It's called the Cowboy Crawl over in Sparks in a couple of weeks, and they wanted some names from other crawls, and I said, "How about the Extemporaneous Crawl?" So they're going to work on that, and then there's the Philanthropical Crawl. That's where everything's for free. And then I said, "How about the Knee Walking Crawl?", but only if you've got a designated driver. Anyway, I'm here to, wow, I heard that Mr. Jack Campbell was the Employee of the Year, the Assistant City Attorney, and I heard he became Employee of the Year for letting 300 innocent people go free. So I'm dusting off one of my old songs. Nice chortle, Mr. Hascheff. Oh, he is over there. I'm dusting off one of my old songs that Bob Dylan taught me and dedicating it to Mr. Jack Campbell. Come gather round, people, wherever you roam, and admit the waters around you have grown. Line it has drawn, the curse it has cast. Slow one now will later be passed, and the present now will later be past. The order is rapidly fading. Fast one now will later be lack, 'cause the times, they are a-changing. Times, they are a-changing. And I've got a whole minute left to, I'm trying to take up some time because...
Thank you, sir.
Somebody very important is on their way here, and he wants to get some public comment too, but he could not, he just texted me and said, "There's no parking." Oh, yeah, I think I had to say a few things about the parking, now that I do have an extra minute or two, almost a minute. I hear rumors that you're trying to move that other building over there by the old city council building that you should have never left in the first place, that you're trying to move those people into this building where we already have atrocious parking capability for the folks. There's no parking out there, not even mentioning those horrendous parking meter doodad, what you call it, gadgets that nobody wants to use. So the parking is atrocious, so I'm adamantly against moving from that perfectly good building over there where there's plenty of easy parking. It's for the people who have plans and want to submit plans and build houses and stuff, and you're going to make everybody have to come to this big black building and find no place to park. I didn't mean to be contentious, by the way. Congratulations, Mr. Campbell.
Will the city attorney check into Mr. Campbell for me, please? Thank you. Approval of the agenda, before we get there, would like to postpone Adam I-2 until the next meeting. We have a 3:30 time certain, a 4:00 p.m. time certain on Moana Park site.
Mr. Mayor, can that be 3:30? There are many individuals who are coming, and that's the time they were told, 3:30. For the J-6.
Yeah, I think the problem is we've got the arts people at 3:30, too.
Well, I was told...
All it means is a time certain.
The request I got was for 4 o'clock, and that's what I...
Doesn't matter.
That's the request I got. No, that's the time they told me they wanted.
Well, can we...
The 3:30 meeting shouldn't take that long, should it?
I don't think so.
The 4 o'clock meeting...
J-5 Arts and Culture Commission.
But can we do, J-8 doesn't have a time certain, it's kind of on the same part, so we can put, can we put them both for 3:30? Bob?
Does that, goes with I-2? I've already got one for 3:30. J-2 is for 3:30. Excuse me, I-2 is postponed, yes.
J-5's for 3:30.
J-5 is for 3:30, yes.
Can we do J-8 for 3:45?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
We have proclamations this morning, we have a presentation, public comment we just had, public hearings, F-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and then the J-6 is scheduled for 4 o'clock, and that's when it was posted. Yes, Mr. Ayazi?
Do we need a motion to continue I-2, or can we do that under just the approval of the agenda?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. You can approve the agenda and move to continue that item all in the same motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda as modified and continue I-2 to the May 15 agenda.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for April 25? Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursement. Okay, anybody else? All right. Chair will entertain a motion to approve, April 15th, April 28th. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Before I start, there was going to be a truce between the two of us, but that's off now, okay? Whereas there are 71,000 citizens aged 60 and older in Reno and Washto County, and whereas the older adults in Reno have an important role in sharing knowledge, wisdom, and understanding of the history of the community through interactions with children, youth, and adults from other generations, and whereas the fruits of knowledge and experience can be effectively transferred from generation to generation through meaningful social interactions, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich citizens, young and old, by emphasizing the value of including elders in public and family life, and creating opportunities for older Americans to interact with people of different generations, and whereas providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow older adults to participate in social activities in the community. Now, therefore, I, Dan Guston, on behalf of the very senior Robert A. Kachel, senior Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby proclaim, May 2012, that's all month, Mayor, May 2012, in case you're wondering, as Older Americans Month, in and for the City of Reno, and urge every citizen to take time this month to engage with our older citizens, especially the mayor, through enjoyable and social interactions such as sports, games, contests, and other forms of play. Our recognition of older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us achieve stronger and more meaningful connections with each other and enrich our community's quality of life. Thank you. Darrell, thank you for your work. Julie, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Older Americans Month kicked off April 30 with a luncheon that had 280 people. Our fine mayor was there, he missed his opportunity to rumble, but we're going to get him signed up in a class to do that. We encourage folks out there to call Parks and Recreation, 334-2262, sorry, I had to do this commercial, and sign up for Older Americans Month activities. There are activities going on throughout the month of May, and there is something for everyone, so please take part in the activities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job, you guys. At this time, Chief Pitts.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Manager and Council, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. It's my pleasure and an honor today to introduce you to Officer Tom Alaxa, who will be receiving the Life Saving Medal for his efforts earlier this year in an incident I'll share with you in just a minute. I think there's a couple of personal things that I would like to share with you about Tom. He's been with the Reno Police Department since 2000, so he has 12 years of service in our community. Tom has been recognized for life-saving efforts on two prior occasions. The first recognition was from the Red Cross when he rescued injured citizens from a mobile home fire in 2009. The second involved a rescue of multiple citizens from the Shamrock Inn in a fire in 2011. Tom has been recognized at the state and national level for policing excellence in his position as a DUI officer for the Reno Police Department and many efforts that he actually created for increasing DUI enforcement and awareness in our city and our region. Tom recently received the Chief's Leadership Award for his work as a senior police officer on his team on graveyard and for developing a problem-oriented approach for the city petty cab situation, which we're working on with this council and the city attorney's office as we speak. Tom has been married to his wife, Jan, for 25 years. He served in the United States Marine Corps for 12 and one tour in Desert Storm. He attended and graduated from the Citadel in 1988 on a Marine Corps scholarship. When I asked Tom, "Why do you enjoy being a police officer?", this hit home for me. First off, the reason I love being a police officer is the joy I take in being part of a top-notch outfit that sets a standard in policing. It's fun, and it gives me a real opportunity to have an impact on the community I serve. When Tom was asked to explain his life in one word, which is pretty tough, I thought his response was incredible. One word for who I am in my life is to be known a man of God, and the one word would be blessed, blessed in my personal life and my professional life. On February 17, 2012, Officer Alaska was hailed in regards to a two-year-old child who was choking. Anti-choking measures had already been unsuccessfully attempted by others on scene, and Officer Alaxa arrived, when he arrived, excuse me, the child was unconscious and not breathing. He immediately performed anti-choking measures of his own, which resulted in the object being dislodged from the child's throat. The child began breathing and eventually regained consciousness. Tom's quick response diverted a tragedy to this family's life. His heroic actions are a commitment to the department's mission to provide the highest level of policing service and partnering with our community to be a model of policing service. Please join me in thanking Tom for his efforts in this case. With the Mayor's permission, would you like to say anything, Tom?
I would, if I may. I'm glad it worked. There's nothing more terrifying than holding this most innocent child that was basically dead in your arms, and I thank the Lord for giving me the right kind of thing to do to bring him around, and I think we're all blessed as a community. It worked.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the consent agenda. Any items you want to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, E1, C1, 2, and 3.
E, C, 1, C, 2, and 3?
Yeah.
2 and 3?
Yes, C1, 2, and 3.
All right. Any others? Okay.
Will you approve the rest of the consent agenda?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam, 1C.
Mr. Mayor, all of these have the same questions, so for the chief in particular. She, oh, I'm sorry, chief, you really probably did want to be able to share more congratulations, but can, bad timing.
Not on your part, sir.
Yeah. In our report, it said that the police inspections were pending. I understand from Mr. Woodley that they have been conducted. What goes into that inspection for a home escort service?
Well, it's similar to other business license backgrounds that we do at the Reno Police Department. It's very extensive. We look into the owner's backgrounds, potentially any other people on the employment application that they may list, and we also work with the FBI. So it's fairly thorough.
And how do we distinguish between escort services and services that are not legal in Washto County?
I would have to defer to the legal team for that. I can tell you that the Reno Police Department in my tenure has been, I would say, very prudent in the audits, the examinations thereof, any escort services we've had in this region before. My understanding is this is the first three we've had in years, and I can tell you that our set team, street enforcement team, which is a regional team, when we had escort services in the past, ma'am, they conducted periodic audits, I believe in the RMC, under 4.0, there's a statute that specifically talks about those services having information available for people of local government that will examine that information on, obviously, visitors, calls, that kind of stuff. I don't have the exact terminology, but we also conducted sting operations on organizations that we felt weren't following the rules. If that places that in a little bit better perspective, ma'am.
And that, well, that kind of approaches my next question is, how do we actually conduct the validation that once the license is approved for an escort service in a neighborhood, a private residential neighborhood, how do we inspect that on a very regular basis to make sure that it's legal services and not those that you would normally go get in Story County?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. We would follow a similar format we follow with alcohol enforcement, and we've talked about that here with this council, and our set team conducts those audits and those enforcement operations, and there would be, I think we'd do 12, maybe 14, alcohol enforcement operations annually, and I have to tell you, there's obviously more people with alcohol licenses than people that are running escort businesses, and I think we would be able to do the same thing probably with a higher frequency as far as the audits go. Now, if we have information or feel that there's a necessity, maybe there's some probable cause to conduct a sting operation, then we would do that immediately. We probably wouldn't conduct an audit. So we would use enforcement instead of an audit as an option. So those would be initially our two options, ma'am.
And what is an escort service? Is the applicant here, maybe they would be better to, unless you can answer that. What services are provided? What types of activities are provided through an escort service?
I would have to defer to them, ma'am, because I'm not familiar with those services intimately and professionally, I don't deal with them. So I would ask for them maybe to provide a definition, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Alex Woodley, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. Yes, ma'am, the definition of escort, I couldn't tell you verbatim unless we have, do we have it here? But pretty much what it entails is providing a service of spending time with someone to events or, let's see, we can give you the exact wording. Escort means any person who, for a salary-free commission, higher or profit, makes himself or herself available to the public for the purposes of accompanying other persons for social engagements.
And so again, how do we enforce that?
Our experience has been with the police department, and I only say this because we recently had one last year, massage therapist. The set team is continually, just like the revenue officers, business license compliance officers, are continually looking for advertisement of certain businesses, whether it's massage therapists or even, for this example, escorts, to identify if they are in fact providing any other type of services or those that are engaged in illegal prostitution, and they do conduct stings. So under that process, an individual who actually has an escort license, whether they have it or not, they would be caught under those, under a system like that, under a mission like that, a sting operation.
And if in one of the stings you found a violation from one of the locations, I see here that the same applicant is for two of the addresses. If you found a violation occurring at one address, what happens? And does it apply to both or three or four, six addresses?
It would apply, it's one, the license is still the same location, for the same location. That one in particular is just two different names, but it would be just like the sting operations for alcohol. The police department will refer to us, and then we will pursue their business license for revocation. Yes, ma'am. And that one being the same address, we will pursue for both, both business licenses because it's the same address.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Guston.
I read the report Craig Scow put forward, and it's pretty detailed, so if there are infractions, it looks like the revocation of the licenses is pretty quick. But what I was surprised to see was the fact that the interim licenses are granted before you get the FBI report, the chief was talking about the FBI report, but that's subject to the FBI check results, which may take months. But how long does that take? The FBI, is there a standard?
All three of them, go ahead.
Typically, it's 30 to 90 days on the background for the FBI background check for a privileged license.
So 30 to 90 days, not, the implication here is it takes months, which I would think would be six months, but...
And if there were some other issues, it could take longer. In the case with these applicants before you, they've all been approved by the Reno Police Department. The backgrounds have been completed.
So they have no infractions at this point?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. President?
Yeah, I guess I have the same question as Councilwoman Zadra, a concern. Do we not have zoning code that would regulate where these type of operations can go? I mean, we have them for adult entertainment establishments. It seems to me that these and resident, I mean, these are residential addresses. But activity and the activity that, that they offer does not take place at the homes.
So what happens? They call? I, I guess I need a better understanding...
Yes, ma'am, as a follow-up, Alex Woodley, uh, again, for the record. Uh, I did speak to both of them, interviewed them, and, uh, the way it works for this particular situation normally as well, is that either they have online or via phone, an individual will call for the service and then they will go out to the site where the service is requested and provide companionship and then return to the home. The home is mostly used, only used for the purpose of, uh, obtaining the business license and having a location where they're located. And then they do use the home because it's their office, and that's pretty much it, as their office, but not, and, and that is one of the rules zoning, is that no business activity can occur regardless of whether it's escort or any other type of business. They can't have businesses or have clients or advertisement at the home because it must maintain the character of a residential neighborhood.
That's another question.
Yes.
It springs from something earlier. You say that you look in, the, the application has to have the employees listed?
That is correct, yes, sir.
How many employees are, of each of these businesses are we talking about?
Uh, the applicants are here and they might be able to answer that question. At this point, I don't have, uh, I think there's just one.
On each.
One on each.
One at, one, yes. Okay, so if there are other employees, then what do they do? Have they come back to business licensing?
Yeah, the employees, um, how the process works, the employees would have to be licensed as independent contractors, so they would have to have a license in order for them to use that particular employee for the service.
I'll tell you what, if, if you said the applicants are here, is if an applicant here just could kind of come forward and explain to us how your business works?
The employees would be self-contracted...
Could you identify yourself, sir?
Excuse me?
Your name needs to be...
My name is Julius Amirfar. The employees would be self-contracted employees where they're licensed through the city to perform escort servicing, which be going out to dinner, to a movie, to a business, uh, show, anything like that.
So that's your definite, because Councilwoman Surfr, or, uh, is that...
Yes, escort service definition would be escorting with somebody to a movie, a show, to dinner. And as for my background check, I do have a liquor license, I do have a tobacco license, I own a 7-Eleven here locally, and I just recently, within 90 days, had a background check for my CCW.
Great.
Do you have any physical contact restrictions for your employees? And I'm presuming that you have two employees since you're requesting two licenses.
Yes, the two licenses will be at, at my home. My home is the office where any of the, uh, city officials can come look at the records, and we have to post an office, so my home residence is...
And your policies and procedures? Do you have any kind of policies, written policies?
Yes, we don't sell sex. Companionship to dinner, to a movie, that's what we offer to our clients.
And how about the other applicant? Can we hear from that one as well?
Uh, I don't know who the other...
No, 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 but I'm asking, is, is the other applicant here?
Can I, can I, sir, can I ask you one more question?
Yes, sir.
I was mentioned, you didn't mention, but somebody else mentioned that you have a website?
I don't have any website or anything until I get a business license. It's illegal to have a website without the business license.
I see, okay.
Any other questions, council? Thank you.
Monica McCallum.
Same questions. Um, what, what are your services and what are your policies and procedures?
To escort clientele to dinner, to a basketball game, baseball game, whatever you, you know, it means to accommodate them. So that's what that is.
And do you have any kind of policies and procedures for behavior that's acceptable and not?
Um, well, just as he said, um, I'm not offering sex, so it's just for my time to go and accompany them to wherever they're needing company.
Any other questions, Mr. President? Chair's looking for a motion. Excuse me, we do have a public comment. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, who has attended virtually every single city council meeting since 1994. And, um, I spoke with this young lady earlier, I've never met her before, but I spoke with her, she was very professional, very articulate. I'm here to support her in her endeavor, and I want to put this in some perspective for all of you. Every week I come in here and you hand out with a rubber stamp anywhere from five to 20 liquor licenses and never ask one person to come up here and answer a question such as what you're talking about right here. That man answered the question with the S-word, he's, there's no S-word being used in this. And I'm not trying to be, um, cantankerous about this, but this is unfair. This is unfair for you to be, uh, asking questions about this when you never ask one question about an alcohol license. And I just noticed by coincidence just last week, 18 different alcohol places got cited for, um, inappropriate sales or whatever. And, but you've never asked the alcohol people, and there's something that's really dangerous, selling liquor, people go out and drive and get killed, and who knows what's going on? And yet, we, this one little thing, escort, comes up, and you gotta put that out there on the table, and I don't think that's right. I'm in favor of this. I spoke, I didn't speak with that, that young man back there, but he seems articulate too. And, um, I just want to also tell you, now, I'm, I'm speaking from my own opinion, but I'm speaking from my own opinion relative to what's going to be going on, and I guarantee you, I would put my hundred-dollar, my hundred-dollar bill on the table right now, my freight old hundred-dollar bill. I will bet my hundred-dollar bill...
Let me hold it.
Everybody's looking, I'm betting my hundred-dollar bill that neither one of these, neither one of these people, neither one of these people, and my hundred-dollar bill bets that neither one of these organizations is going to invite any Secret Service people to their place.
I think Mr. Denae missed that meeting, we had those lengthy discussions about the liquor store on Virginia Street.
Yes, yes, he sure did.
And all the liquor stores downtown and all that stuff. That was above...
Never mind, Mr. Denae, your time's...
I agree, he was right, he caught, Sam was wrong out of, um, out of 6,000 liquor licenses, one time, did you talk to the people?
He said he was wrong, Mr. Mayor, you should have let him keep going.
There's a tweet, if I ever saw one.
All right, chair needs a motion. Ms. Edger.
I'll go ahead and move in to approve, Mr. Mayor. I mean, they're coming in, it's legal, um, they're following all the regulations, I mean, they've come in, I don't see, uh, any legal justification where we can deny it. Doesn't mean I, I like it, but these are the legal requirements, and so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, I, I think there's sufficient checks and balances in place with the police department that will ensure that it, it will operate appropriately, so...
Mr. Assey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll support this because frankly, I think this happens all the time, and we have people here who are coming forward and doing the right thing by getting the licensing and, and doing it the way they're supposed to do it, and, um, I think kudos to them for doing the right, doing it the correct way.
In other words, you're agreeing with Sam?
No. I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And perhaps we should follow up on, um, Councilman Suarez's inquiry. Is it appropriate for us, for the future, to look at proper zoning, um, where we have restrictions on cabaret and other types of adult activities? So for, for future, we'll put that on an agenda item for the future as potentially to, to investigate if there's proper zoning.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Excuse me. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. And now we'll go to public hearings. Adam F. 1, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
All right.
You have the, you have the presentation.
Do you need a presentation?
No, I have one question.
One question, go ahead.
Um, yeah, under the neighborhood revitalization, um, on page eight, um, it was, the outcome was an abandoned parcel, uh, in the Forest Street area? Is that what we're going to be using the funds for?
Um, Jody Royal-Goodwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator, for the record, that is the proposal at this point. We're working with code on identifying a specific property that is, um, having, well, having a huge impact on code enforcement requirements, and that's, that is also distressed and purchasing that property for redevelopment. Yes, that is the proposal.
Uh, which piece of property is that?
Um, I really can't say right now.
Okay. Uh, how is that determined, that particular area?
Um, because of the, where, we have a developer that's interested in developing housing in that area specifically targeted towards the homeless population, so we were looking at a way to, to support that effort.
So would it be, what kind of transitional housing or...
It'll be permanent supportive housing.
Okay.
Targeting households at or below 40% of the area median income.
Okay. Any other questions? Chair entertain a motion?
Who'd approve?
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 2, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Chair entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. John Krompottic, representing, um, the applicant. I just got word this week from the executor, Executive Director of Coral Academy that his financing didn't come through, so they've requested a continuance. So we would appreciate, and I asked him if they wanted to do time certain, he said they don't know if it's going to come through, so he wanted to keep it open-ended. I thought we had an easy one here and a very good use of the site, but, um, no, no huge shocker, so that's where we're at.
Okay. Have a motion to continue?
Mr. Mayor? Tracy Chase. On continuing a public hearing, uh, for notice purposes, you do need to pick a date or time or else it has to go back through the notice process. So whatever the applicant would like.
Um, because it's completely undefined, I think we'll just keep it open and then they'll have to repay, or pay for re-noticing.
Well, John, wouldn't it be easier and cheaper for your app, if we just did it for a month or two months down the road, and then it would just be on our agenda again?
Okay, uh, if, if that's easier, I'm trying to be respectful of you guys' time.
February 13th and 13th.
Yeah, 90, 90 days?
There's 60 or 90 days, is that...
They'll give you 90 days.
90 days?
Yeah.
Okay, how about 60 days then, let's hope? I guess if it's a bonding thing, he said it's bonding.
We can just continue it again.
Okay, if, if that's okay and it's not putting...
If we, if we do do 60 days, John, is there any issue with it coming, you wanting to try to bring it back earlier than that?
That's what I was thinking, because I was trying to pin him down, Yilmak Oz at Coral Academy, and he said he just has no...
But you could find out in a week that you want to bring it back.
That's right, so maybe we do it in a month, right?
Do it every 30 days.
If that's no...
Yeah, I mean, I'd hate to...
I agree.
You know, if, if it's, if we could, if he gets it worked out in the next week or so, I'd hate to have us out 60 days.
Well, both the owner and the applicant were in favor of continuance, suggests there's some hope, Mr. Mayor, so if we could do a month, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you for that suggestion, uh...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, um, to continue this to our last meeting in June.
First meeting in, first, first meeting.
I'm sorry, first meeting in June.
First meeting in June.
I have a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 3.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Dwight.
Chair entertain a motion?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 4, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and we received no public comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On this one, um, before I knew this was coming up, I'm part of a group that was looking at, at, we made an offer to a building up there, I don't think it's going to go through, but we made an offer before I knew this happening, so I'm going to disclose and abstain from voting on, on this. And I haven't spoken to anyone about this, I only knew about this on Friday, but I don't think I should vote on it.
Okay. Have a motion second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 4, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and we received no public comment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On this one, um, before I knew this was coming up, I'm part of a group that was looking at, at, we made an offer to a building up there, I don't think it's going to go through, but we made an offer before I knew this happening, so I'm going to disclose and abstain from voting on, on this. And I haven't spoken to anyone about this, I only knew about this on Friday, but I don't think I should vote on it.
Okay. Have a motion second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 4, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and we received no public comment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On this one, um, before I knew this was coming up, I'm part of a group that was looking at, at, we made an offer to a building up there, I don't think it's going to go through, but we made an offer before I knew this was happening, so I'm going to disclose and abstain from voting on, on this. And I haven't spoken to anyone about this, I only knew about this on Friday, but I don't think I should vote on it.
Okay. Have a motion second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 4 1.
Which is Bill number 6792, and ordinance amending the Reno Civil Code Title 18 Annexation of Land Development, Chapter 18.08, zoning, Section 18.08.405E, entitled UNRC, University of Nevada Regional Center Planning Area Overlay Zoning District by adding language to allow certain uses listed in the I industrial zone prohibited, prohibit certain other uses listed in the I industrial zone, establish when and how industrial uses and standards may be utilized and establish the locations within the UNRC Regional Center Planning Area Overlay Zoning District where these standards apply to give other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam F. 5. Yes.
I abstained for reasons previously put on the record.
Uh, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The reason for the abstention is that, um, Councilmember Zadra's sister is married to a firefighter, so she has a standing abstention.
Okay. Chair entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
For the record, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Thank you for bailing me out. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager. You have before you an agreement, uh, to extend the current collective bargaining agreement between the City of Reno and the IAFF, the International Association of Firefighters, Local 731. And this, um, extends the current agreement, which was in effect from, uh, July 1, 2011 through June 30th of 2013. And if the city clerk's office could turn on the magnifier, that would be great. And, um, you may recall that the, um, that the current, uh, agreement, um, called for a 3.8, 7% salary decrease, a 2% elimination of the, uh, emergency medical technician basic incentive pay. It also allowed for vacation to be taken in no less than 12-hour increments. And, um, certain holiday time by each employee represented by the IFF was to be transferred to the union business leave pool. And emergency overtime was reduced from 2.1 to 1.5%. Um, this agreement, uh, if the council approves, um, still needs to be ratified by the IFF, and that is currently occurring, and that vote should end sometime in early June. And if the IFF approved this agreement, uh, then, uh, the tentative agreement will be in effect. And the total cost for the year for this agreement is $29,601,254.
Any questions? And this means, this is a no-pay increase for an additional year for the firefighters, correct?
That's correct.
And the other, uh, part drops off about, uh, the safer grants, that drops off of June 30th of this year, that 3.85% increase?
Um, the safer grant piece drops off on June 30th, correct?
So this would be extending it for another year through June 30th of 2014 with, this
That's correct, about four years, four and a half.
And they've given up-
Given up close to twelve percent? I think a little over twelve.
Open public hearing, I'm just going to say it, I can't help myself. I mean, this is the number-one issue on the Economic Vitality Plan, is these agreements, and we have an agreement here where the firefighters have, uh, as I think Councilman Azzi pointed out, taken reduction after reduction, so, again, open hearing, and there's nobody here.
Well, I appreciate what they've done, they've been very cooperative in working with us and trying to make things go, so.
Move to approve.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're running the meeting, you can't make the motion.
Okay.
I make the motion to approve.
Very good. I have a motion from the mayor. A second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, now I'll take over.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to resolutions. H One.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Three, resolution granting approval of fifteen thousand to Art Town for opening night sponsorship by the Reno Arts and Culture Commission.
Move to approve?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Two.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Four, resolution granting community pride grant funds to the O'Brien Middle School Parent Teacher Organization to purchase soccer nets and basketball rims and nets for their outside athletic program in the amount of two thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Three.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Five, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada, two thousand and four Special Assessment District Number Three, RTC slash reapportionment Number Two.
Move to, move to adopt.
Have a motion to have second. Make a minute, second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Four.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Six, resolution to reapportion the assessment for the city of Reno, Nevada, two thousand and one Special Assessment District Number Two, reapportionment Number Five for Sted.
Move, second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Five.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Seven, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada, nineteen ninety-nine Special Assessment District Number Two, reapportionment Number Eleven for Retrac.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Six.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Eight, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada, nineteen ninety-nine Special Assessment District Number Two, reapportionment Number Twelve for Retrac.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Seven.
Resolution Number Seven Three Nine Nine, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada, two thousand and two Special Assessment District Number Three, reapportionment Number Eleven for Double R Boulevard.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Eight.
Resolution Number Seven Four Zero Zero, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada, two thousand and two Special Assessment District Number Four, reapportionment Number Sixty-two for Somerset Parkway.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion to have second. Question, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Hardis, City Public Works, for the record. Um, I wanted to note on the resolution that, under the new parcel numbers, those parcel numbers should be two-three-four-zero-one-one-four-six and two-three-four-zero-one-one-four-seven. Um, I left the zeros out before the elevens, so I just wanted to make that note, so we can correct that on the record.
We'll make those corrections.
Yeah, amend the motion.
Okay, have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam H. Nine.
Resolution Number Seven Four Zero One, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada, two thousand and nine Special Assessment District Number One, reapportionment Number One.
Move to adopt.
Motion to have second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go to ordinances. Adam I One.
Bill Number Six Seven Nine Three, an ordinance to amend. No, it's I One. I thought, I One, I thought I Two was the one that was continued. Ms. Chase is, is on the wrong page. Yes, she did. You, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. We'll discuss that later. Bill Number Six Seven Nine Three, an ordinance to amend Title Twelve, Chapter Twelve Point One Six of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Public Works and Utilities, Chapter Twelve Sixteen Sewer Service Division Six, Billing Collections and Enforcement of Sewer User Charges by Amending Section Twelve Point One Six Point Three Nine Five C Appeals to Municipal Court, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Move to refer.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I Two was-
I Three. Steph, um, Cadence is on her way back, uh, should be here at the end of the presentation, so I'm going to postpone this a little bit. They do have a couple people that wish to speak, you want to- Do you want to wait and speak after she makes the presentation?
Sure.
When she gets here? Uh, Mr. Brooks also? Mr. Brooks? Huh? Excuse me, that is Rebecca Brooks. I'm sorry, Rebecca. Thank you. Okay, we'll wait until the presentation. All right, Adam J. Two, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works, uh, on this item, this was one that was discussed at your joint meeting, it involves the voting structure of the Flood Management Authority. I don't know if there's much that I can add to this item, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Azzi.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, as you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I was looking at two different options, is if we're going to change the voting structure, we should also change the number of people, um, from each jurisdiction who's on there. It shouldn't be two, two, and two, it should represent, I think, more favorably, um, whoever's going to be impacted the most as far as any fees that are, that are imposed. Um, however, I heard yesterday, there's another turn in this, is that, um, the county hasn't turned over the money to flood control yet. They said they, they sent a letter out, until there's an executive director, they will not turn over the money. Well, we voted to adopt an executive director, and now, yesterday, I heard that they pulled it off their agenda because now they're going to say, until we change the voting structure, they're not giving the money to the, to the flood control. So, I'm not sure what they're really doing, or, so, the reason I'm bringing that up is I think we're going to have to look at the, the agreement that we have, to see whether they legally can withhold that money.
That's, that was my question, are they in breach of the, the, the joint powers agreement?
I, I don't know.
If, if they haven't funded this?
That's what we'll have to look at.
JPA, uh, just doing research on it, Councilman Dorch, there is nothing, I mean, the voting structure, that was what we all agreed upon in the JPA.
Right, I, I know, I understand that, but I'm just saying, is there anything in the, in the agreement that says they have to fund it, though?
Well, one thing it said was, they would fund it six months, or, or a certain amount of time, maybe it was sixty days, after a letter came from Flood to say we want it. And we waited for them and their people, who was our, uh, last year, we had, John Sherman was the one who was operating the money for this, and they were supposed to set up the accounting practices and the computer stuff, so it's, okay, we'll wait for that to happen, and that took until October, they said. And then it was the executive director thing, and the executive director finally said, okay, we want the money in December, because we had everything in place, and now they're saying, because he wasn't really the executive director, that sixty-day timeline didn't even start yet.
Who, who has the authority to spend the money at this point in time?
The County Commission, in my opinion.
Is the money there?
Yes, the County Commission still has the money. What's really weird is there's still two, there are still two flood agencies. There's the one that, that was set up, that had, UNR is on that one. That is still in place, it hasn't had a meeting in a long time, and then there's this new Flood Management Authority, and once this is stood up, the other one is supposed to disappear.
So, so nothing in the JPA required them to, to move the money to the, to the, um, new agency?
Yes, it did.
Susan Ball, real deputy city attorney. Um, in, um, about, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of that staff report, but back in March of this year, on the twenty-eighth agenda, there were two items, and one of them dealt with, uh, FMA, and I laid out all the legal requirements in that staff report, and, in other words, that, that, once the request was made, the county had ninety days-
Sixty or ninety days.
Sixty or ninety days, I, like I said, I don't have that specific, to turn over the money, and the request has now been made at their last Flood Management Authority. They took action to not only approve an executive director, but they also reissued a letter seeking now county to turn over that money. Um, per the Flood Management Agreement, um, then, once that occurs, it is the Flood Management Authority now has the ability to spend that money in accordance with the law, and the one, in other words, the law creating the one-eight-cent sales tax, and the plan, which, um, has been amended, and the Flood Management Authority also has the authority to amend that plan if, uh, through the county if need be, so, um-
How does the Flood Management Authority enter into a contract with an executive director if they have no money?
Exactly my point.
That's why we, in fact, he, just to let the other members of the council know, his, uh, and Councilman Azzi was concerned about the money not being transferred over, his hiring is contingent on the county transferring the money. So, if the county doesn't transfer the money, we have no executive director.
But now, you're saying that they have, from the time that you guys sent this letter, they have ninety days to, to fund it?
I think it's sixty.
They, but, we actually sent the letter in December, and they're trying to say that he didn't have the authority to send the letter. So they should have turned it over to us in March.
So now he has the authority to send the letter?
Yeah, I believe, well, not, not technically, because he's still not the executive director until they turn over the money.
Money, yeah.
And here's, here's my, my dilemma as a board member. This FMA, the Flood Management Authority, has no money, but we're required to submit a budget to the state. How do I submit a budget to the state when I have no money?
You can submit a budget.
A bunch of zero.
A lot of zero.
Exactly, and I said that to the county manager yesterday, I said, you guys better be putting this money in your budget, as to where it goes, because we, how do I submit a budget with zero amount of it? So, it's going to be very interesting.
I, I guess the question I have is-
What do we do?
Projects are just in limbo, and, most notably, the one that concerns me, and I know you're, both of you are right on top of that, are members, is the Virginia Street Bridge. I mean, how, how, what's, happens, delay or timeframes now?
Well, they, they say that they will still, the County Commission will still authorize the, the decisions of the Flood Management Authority, unless they're deemed illegal by their district attorney. So that's, they say they will still, if we adopt a budget, they'll still agree to all those things, unless the time, so basically, they get veto power over what happens, is what's, what's happening, which is what we're trying to get away from in this FMA, give us the money, and this board will make the decisions.
You know, bottom line, this turning into another fire situation, I mean, here's the thing, we stepped up and we said, okay, we'll compromise. Jay, as you all know, was not the first choice. Dave and I said, hey, to move this thing along, we got it there. Then we compromised to make something happen, then it's one demand after another demand after another demand. Then, now, the fact is, don't want to give money for the Virginia Street Bridge, that's going to put a ton of people to work. Um, I mean, it's one thing after another, um, and it's getting to the point where it's very frustrating, because it affects, um, our constituents and, and the ability to get a flood control project done.
This is why I keep saying, I think the county's playing the shell game, moving money from here to there and stuff like that. That's the only reason they ask, is the money there. But we don't know it's there, nobody's given us an audit or anything.
So what I would request in this is, maybe we ask the attorneys to look again at what the county's demands are, and see whether they're legal, because we may have to initiate some, maybe we just disband this FMA and say they're in breach, and-
I think we, I think we go after them, tell them they have to move the money over.
Yeah.
But I don't think we should, I don't think we should change any structure.
Nope.
I think we should require them to move the money over.
And it would have to come from the city of Reno or the city of Sparks, because the Flood Management Authority's not going to sue the county, because it's unanimous vote, so the county guys aren't going to vote to sue themselves. So it's got to come from the city of Reno.
Well, it's our agreement.
Well, let's send them a letter, let's send them a letter or something, tell them to move the money, if they don't, then let's talk about filing a lawsuit to make it happen.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, will take a look at the legal issues and report back to you in a confidential memorandum, so, so you understand what we can and cannot do, given the legal terms in the agreement.
And we'll, how long will it take us to get that?
Oh, I think just a couple days, you should have it, beginning of next week.
So I'll move, just to continue this, we'll just keep this on the agenda until we can decide, and, and maybe make it, um, broad enough to where we can talk about whether we want to initiate a lawsuit.
Okay.
We can ex- We can expand the language on this, if you want to continue it to next, um, week, and we could get all the information back to you, so you can make that decision based upon the language and the authority you have under the JPA agreement.
Perfect. Dave, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Tracy.
Would another approach be to, just to move the ball forward on this, to your point, um, Dave, to say, we would agree to a change in the voting structure, provided they had a different makeup on the board, with Reno having more representation, and two, you've got to transfer the money?
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind that, and I don't, I never even said that Reno should have more. It could be that Sparks will have more, depending on how, and I said this early on, I'm not sure who's impacted the most, whether it should, and how it should be done, should it be done on population, should it be done on assessed valuation, should it be done on the flood zone? I don't really care how it's done, Sparks may have more votes than Reno or Washoe County.
And, and that might be because, isn't the North Truckee Drain the first major project, that, that's ahead of the Virginia Street Bridge?
Well, they're, they've been funding it through a, a sewer tax, that they don't want to bond against, so they're getting the design work done, just like we're designing the Virginia Street Bridge. Frankly, I think the Virginia Street Bridge will probably be built before, before that.
Okay.
The problem is, too, that there's a legal question whether that's, was done correctly or not, so-
The taxation?
Correct.
The sewer tax.
So, I mean, we had consultants that were looking at the entire rate structure, so, I mean, I mean, this thing, there's kind of some, some, uh, problems in, in the process, but, I mean, you're looking at it, but I think we've got to have that. Jay, I don't know, you're here, if you wanted to say anything.
Morning, members of the council. For the record, J. Aldine, Executive Director of the Flood Project. Um, the city of Reno, city of Sparks, and Washoe County have all been invited to come to our FMA meeting and actually give us their requests for capital projects. I asked Neil Crutts, Deputy City Manager for Sparks, if they were officially going to request any money for this, for the North Truckee Drain. Uh, he had, he did not want to give a, or give me a, a response, I was going to give him a call tomorrow and see if I could be prepared for whatever he says. Um, to my best knowledge, the city of Sparks is looking at alternatives and ways to fund that. From a priority standpoint, to answer Councilman Augustine, um, the, the FMA has not established a full priority of this project goes in front of that, but they have, uh, funded the design, full design of the Virginia Street Bridge, and, and I am looking at ways to where we can get these projects funded over the next several years, from a cash flow standpoint. So, I would expect, um, I would expect the, those priorities will be established by the FMA, so, but I don't believe that the city of Sparks will come in for a request for, let's say, twenty million dollars, they know we don't have it. So, they're going to have to find, this project is in the neighborhood of forty million dollars in construction costs, and they're going to have to find a significant other source of funding in order to be able to get that project moved forwards substantially. Where in the Virginia Street Bridge, uh, city of Reno staff have, have been, um, seeking, uh, grants from NDOT, uh, and RTC, I know NDOT has, has promised some money, and, uh, the flood project has money, and we're kind of looking at how we might be able to give that, from a staff standpoint, that is, how we might be able to turn that over to the city of Reno to build the bridge. But, there have no been, there have not been any official, uh, priorities established, Councilman Augustine.
Can you, where did they come up with this now, to hold up transferring the money? Where do you get paid?
I, I will-
Where are you? You just being a kind heart to our community?
I get paid as the Deputy Director, and, uh, which is, which is the position I have held for the last several years. Um-
Who pays that?
Uh, it, it goes through the county, but it's paid for by the one-eight-cent sales tax.
Okay.
It's the same as all staff, uh, with the Flood Management Authority currently.
Were they, aren't they supposed to transfer that money over now that you're in charge and, uh, you've got your own staffs and stuff?
The, uh, the, the way that my contract was approved, was that upon pending the transfer of the money, would be the effective date of my contract. Uh, we, I believe that my contract will go forward to Washoe County for their approval, it's a three-way- It's a three-way contract. And then, the final trigger will be the actual transfer of the money. Now, there are, there are strategies going on, and obviously, one of the strategies was to look at the voting structure. The county came out first with that, that notion and passed it, and city of Sparks has followed suit. So, as far as being an official demand based for my contract, it's not part of my contract.
But then, it's, it's not part of their...
Look, and I would, I would rather, I am representing the FMA, and I would rather, yes, I would rather that somebody that was representing the county or the city of Sparks would comment on that. I cannot.
Okay, no, and I wouldn't want you to.
Legal opinion from our legal counsel that says they have to transfer the money. That is not from, I, I'm sorry, Jay, but we do, the board, that they have an obligation to transfer the money. It hasn't, I mean, the voting structure's in the JPA, sorry. They, I mean, all these strings, even executive director was a stretch, but we went forward with that, and now it's separate demands. It's in there. We have the opinion from our own legal counsel at flood control. So, I mean...
Unless, unless y'all wanna vote today on changing, what is the makeup of the board now?
Two from Reno, two from Sparks, and two from Washoe County, and all decisions have to be unanimous. So, what they want is, they wanted to keep the same 2-2 and 2, but different voting at different times, whether it had to be unanimous, or a majority, or supermajority. And I'm okay with the, with changing the structure, but I think that it should be, just like we do on Tamwha, there's more representation, and RTC has different, has...
Governing board?
Right, governing board. All of our boards are made up of population or something else, other than just 2-2 and 2. Because, I mean, frankly, who would lose out in this, I think, is, the county, they don't have very many residents, I think, affected by flood control. They have some in Hidden Valley, but a majority are in Sparks and the city of Reno.
And right now, Incline Village, so, that...
Well, and that would be how, it would be affected by, who would pay a fee?
Right.
So, if you're gonna, so I said, you could look at it two different ways. Who's affected by flood? Okay, you have it by that. Or assessed valuation, which I think Reno's assessed valuation's probably 60% of the county, something like that. So, I, I told Chairman Smith a long time ago, "I don't care how we decide how to do it, but it should be based on something realistic."
Councilman Asay, if I can ask you...
Yes.
It, it seems like it would be mitigated, you're talking about the voting structure with a supermajority. It'd be mitigated if, I don't know if it's still in there, but we had discussed at this table that, on any approval, there has to be at least one member of each entity that votes either positive or negative, whichever way that goes. Is that still part of this proposed voting structure?
I believe that's one of their proposals.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So, I guess, unless you figure that whoever, whichever it be, at that point, you wouldn't be shut out, because your representation would have to be unanimous, or you have at least one person who can be, who can be voting, one, affirmatively or negatively?
As I said before, that would mean only one Reno city councilperson could vote to impose a tax to everyone.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So, they're not gonna transfer the money unless we vote to change the voting structure?
That is my understanding.
Well...
Yep.
Well, I think...
They can't.
We don't, but I'll accept one.
They can, a court can?
The court?
Did we make a motion to continue this, Mr. Asay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to continue this, and have legal staff look into the legal options that the city of Reno has.
When do you have another meeting with the flood control?
Friday.
Friday?
Would you be able to at least carry forward?
I will.
I think your idea of changing the, however we do it...
And I've said, I've said that to them also, in those public meetings, too, Pierre.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion for continuous, I have a second, yes.
Well, second yes.
Let me get a second, second, go.
Second yes, and for further discussion. How far along are we? I know we've got, and this wouldn't be, this is for staff, for the design of the bridge and all of the approvals that we need for core, and, and, and. And where I'm going with this, John, is, will there be an opportunity for us to quickly get this decision from the attorneys and put forward our own expectation of this board, and have something enacted that will not put any more delays on this bridge? Will we be able to coincide? When we're ready, all of these administrative issues will be resolved.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Flans, Director of Public Works. On, on this particular item, today, we were able to approve the continuation design to get to final design with Jacob's Engineering on the consent agenda. As part of that, that allows us, we are not being delayed in that decision to move forward with our design. That funding was already approved by the, the flood management authority or previous flood management coordinating committee, flood project coordinating committee. So, those funds are already dedicated to that. And so, we are continuing. So, there's no, there's no delay right now in what we're doing. As far as moving forward, this will allow us to take the design from 30% and move it into 60, and then final design. We are looking to have the design completed, near completion towards the end of the year, and begin the permitting process. Our plan is to begin, or go out for construction beginning of 2014, with construction to start in June of 2014. And that is the schedule that we've set up, working with both the Federal Highway Administration and the Army Corps of Engineers.
And so, given your evaluation of the process that's been followed, and the relationship that is put upon, on this joint board, do you think we're gonna make a, I would ask you, that fellow councilmembers that have said, do sit on that board?
We're gonna make what? I'm sorry.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I think the bridge will happen. I, I've had extensive discussions with the executive director, and he's got money in his budget to, to work on the bridge. And I've had conversations with the head of RTC to talk with NDOT, to have money available for the bridge. So, if these smaller little hurdles can get, get cleared, I think we'll know more in the next two months about whether this is gonna be able to move forward. In fact, the next thing I'm working on for that bridge is to try, and it's my conversation with Lee Gibson, is who is gonna build the bridge? Let's say we have the money tomorrow. Who's gonna build it? Is it the city of Reno? Is it RTC? Is it NDOT? Because all those things seem to come at the end, and they start arguing about now, who's gonna build it and who has authority? Because right now, I think they could start going for the permits sooner rather than later. So, we should be having those discussions right now with who's actually gonna do the construction, assuming we have the money today, so that, trying to speed up some of these things.
Well, and I guess that really is the, the genesis of my question, Dave, is speed up some of these things. It's just been, first of all, so slow to start, and now, these hiccups that have been, in particular, in the last year to 18 months, do you really think we'll be able to meet those, those trigger points?
Yeah, and to be fair, one of the reasons it couldn't move forward earlier was they spent so much time on the design of the bridge and public, and so now, they're still working on the design. So, you can't move forward until you at least get 30% design, which I believe they have now, and they're moving towards 60%. So, they can start working on those now. In fact, I think there's a meeting about the bridge on Thursday, tomorrow night.
There is. There's a, the meeting on Thursday to receive public comment on the aesthetics, and we'll bring that back to you in June for final decision with that. But this allows, today's contract allows them to continue design work past the 30% design, because the, the aesthetics aren't the main part of the design. Now that we know what the bridge type is going to be, that, that allows them to move forward with, with where they are there. As far, as far as the, the other funding goes, again, we're looking to NDOT as first funding, we're looking to the flood management authority as second funding source, and RTC as the third funding source. Met with NDOT yesterday. They, they are in favor of the project. They're looking to dedicate up to $10 million in 2014 for the construction of the project. At this point, because of continuing resolutions and not having a transportation authorization bill in place, they're unwilling to commit to the full level until that is, till that is accomplished. But as far as design and being prepared to construct, that's what we're all moving towards. We have everything we need to get to the point where we have permitting and ability to construct.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to continue. We have a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. You want to do the same thing on, no, item J3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, John Flans, Director of Public Works. On the item before you today, we have three projects that are going to affect our property that we own jointly with the city of Sparks, the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. That facility is approximately 247 acres, and the three projects that we have will encompass about 70 acres, but the actual right-of-way needed, that would be, would be for final easements, for the southeast connector is about, I believe it was 13 or 17 acres for that project. The discussion that we wanted to have with you is, staff needs to put together an agreement on how we would handle these three projects. It would be an agreement between the cities of Reno, the cities of Sparks, city of Sparks, and the Regional Transportation Commission. One of the projects is the actual southeast connector, and part of that project, as you are aware, they have set up a construction manager at risk project for the bridge. So, they are looking to, on the design and then construction. One of the other projects involved in this is because the southeast connector is going through the flood area that it's in, it's a one-to-one mitigation. And so, part of their mitigation would be to do some restoration to Steamboat Creek, which helps with our water quality initiatives out there, and that's, that's the, the second project that would, that would go across this property. And the third item, of course, is our flood project, and potential of what, of what it would do, or the needs it would have through this area. So, because of those needs and these three projects, what we're kinda asking for today is, what types of things would you like staff to include in a, in a local agreement to come back to you regarding these three projects? A couple of things to consider, we put in the report, is that because the Truckee, the Tamwha property is located and annexed into the city of Sparks, any of the improvements that would be built upon that property and would then go back for maintenance purposes would become maintenance responsibility of the city of Sparks, which includes, for instance, on the southeast connector, the bridge would become part of, of the maintenance responsibility for the city of Sparks. Another item to be considered would be whether or not we would want to include in the project a secondary access to Tamwha. During the '97 flood, we did not flood at the facility at Tamwha, but we had no access in, and we actually helicoptered employees into the site to work, to keep the, the plant running. And then, finally, we are, right now, out for a energy services contract at Tamwha to look at energy efficiencies that we can implement there, and some of those may include solar projects or other, other needs for land. And so, those, all those things are, are considerations of the, of the land that we have, but also the need for the public project, for public projects that are anticipated. So, my, my question or reason for coming for you today is to ask, are, would you consider these to be public projects, and therefore, we would be willing to, to, to give up the easements for these projects? Are these something that you'd want to see a fee for, for the impacts of these projects? Just want some direction from council on how you'd like us to proceed with an interlocal agreement with the city of Sparks and the RTC.
Mr. Asay?
I believe we should charge for them like any other property owner, in my opinion. Get an appraisal, put it out there, and have it paid for. With flood, with the flood, though, we already had an agreement that we would give up any city-owned property for flood control. So, we passed that resolution a long time ago. So, flood control, that would be free, but for RTC, it would have to be paid for, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Chair will entertain the motion.
Go ahead, question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Custom.
You didn't mention anything about the, the effluent lines changing and redesigning, changing the direction? That was in your report about, about the RTC going ahead and moving?
They, they may make, in terms of the alignment, they may make some slight adjustments to the alignment based on where our effluent reclaimed water line stubs are. So, those are, we have some consideration for them in, in this design.
So, the consideration is to move, not, okay, all right, all right, gotcha.
What's the final, are they gonna put an intersection there, or is there not gonna be an intersection there for us to...
The, the intersection, I assume you're referring to is Clean Water Way, which is the access road to Tamwha. At this point, there is, the freeway will go over Clean Water Way, and it'll just be an underpass. No, no, no connection, no access at this point. That's one of the considerations for, for us to consider, if we would want to have a secondary access to the plant or not.
Okay. I'll make that motion that we ask for appraisal and appraised, at least appraised value, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I have a second.
That's in addition to the other items staff has listed.
Correct.
Yep.
Have a motion, second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J4, Parks and Recreation.
That's postponed, Mr., that's 3:30.
Huh?
That's 3:30.
3:30.
And J6, or J8, Mr.?
Yes, that's right.
Oh, you moved J8, J9.
Let's go to J10, J9. Let's go to J9.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Ms. Matiavich was also the staff member on the Charter Review Committee. I sat in that as an attorney, and the Charter Review Committee researched and reviewed the language relating to a ballot question, and their recommendation is provided to you in the staff report. You're, we do have some representatives of the Charter Review Committee in the audience. You're welcome to take it now, or if you choose to wait till Ms. Matiavich gets here with whatever your preference is.
I would wait until Kaynitz gets here. She'll be here about 3 o'clock, so we're just going on. Item J10?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the city of Reno. Item J10 is consideration of the $2 room tax surcharge to be spent on the Worth Group for the design and construction documents and construction and administration of additional bowling lanes at the National Bowling Stadium. Fred Graham from the Worth Group is here, and he's gonna do a short little presentation as to what is tentatively planned for. This item has gone to the Surcharge Advisory Subcommittee, and they have made a recommendation for approval of the item. But before we get to start on that, Fred?
For the record, Fred Graham with Worth Group Architects. The project essentially is to, go to the next one. Uh... Thank you. One more. There you go. At the southwest portion of the first floor of the National Bowling Stadium, what we'd do is come in and demo the existing restaurant, and then, come in with a couple different options that we discuss and review with the subcommittee, and an opportunity of whether 10 lanes or 12 lanes would work down on that first level. 10 lanes might be very tight. We have to, it would come down to inches on determining whether that works or not, but the 12 lanes, if it went that direction, the corner of Center and Plaza would have to be squared off on the, on the structure itself to accommodate those lanes.
This item is being paid totally with the $2 room surcharge. No city general fund is being used. Currently, the fund has revenues available in the $2 surcharge. The entire project is currently estimated at approximately $1.9 million, and at the time, we will have the $2 surcharge available before going ahead with that project. There is a contingency upon this item. It is contingent upon the USBC approving the agreement with the city of Reno and the Reno-Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority for a signed agreement for the extension. Any questions?
No, I think we should go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
George.
Now, are we gonna get started right away on the design? I know that it's contingent upon us getting the deal done, but I think, didn't we talk that we would go ahead and cut them loose and at least let them get started? Because we're, we're tight. I mean, we've gotta have these done by February...
Needs to be done by February 13, the construction for the men's congress.
And our timeline's getting pretty tight right now, right?
Definitely.
So, are we, are we gonna go ahead and start with the ability to, if, for some reason we don't get this contract signed, that we can stop it? Is that, is that the plan?
Well, if we have a signed contract with Worth Group, Worth Group can begin, it depends on how you make the motion. We can have them begin immediately, and the next phase of the actual construction, we would wait until we have a... would wait until we have an agreement.
If you started immediately, Fred, how much would we expend over the next two weeks?
Actually, over the next couple of weeks, there wouldn't be a great deal spent, probably less than $10,000.
So you could go ahead and get started with, if we give you a $10,000 cushion to get started or something, I mean, we're hopeful that this thing's all going to be done soon.
Yes.
But I've been saying that for two months. So I think, you could go ahead and get started. We wouldn't go through more than about $10,000 of the contract over the next couple of weeks. And that puts us hopefully in a position where we're moving towards still making the February deadline?
Yeah, what our estimated timeline would be is we'd want to get construction started in September, so bidding would have to occur in August.
And when you say September, I think we talked about this at the meeting too, was that's concluding demolition, correct?
Yes.
In September?
Yes.
And one of the things we talked about was maybe we could do like we did for the Hall of Fame is have our own people do the demo and maybe then we could start the demo in July, is that right, Robert?
Yes.
Is that a possibility still? Did we look into that at all?
We can look into it. We haven't gotten a final determination of when we can start the demolition, but depending on what happens here.
We could start as soon as the women get done, I would think. I mean, so as soon as they're out of there in June, I mean, if we're using our own people, we wouldn't have to be, wouldn't have to be part of the contract in September.
It just depends on our resources of our own people.
I'm just trying to get us to the February date, that's all I'm trying to do. So, okay.
You want to spend, excuse me, very little money until you get the confirmed contract? And as you just said, you thought the United Bowling Congress would be two months ago, but do you have a reasonable idea of how soon that could be?
Well, I think we would have had it done two months ago if we hadn't had the attorneys get involved in writing the contract.
Okay.
But I think.
Our attorney or their attorney?
I think it was a little bit of everybody, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I think we're there. I don't know if Jonathan's here. Did we get a final doc back today? Final draft?
No, we have, for the record, Jonathan, we have a final change that's, I believe, is being presented today to USBC for their concurrence.
But that's, is that in our document? Do we get it drawn up and get it to them?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think that's, I think that's all agreed to now, right?
Yeah, I just haven't heard back. I haven't heard back whether Joe's given it to them and whether they've agreed to it yet.
Yeah, I think it's going to be Monday before we hear, Monday or Tuesday before we hear. So I think we're close. I think we're right there.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I think Fred's fine with that, right?
Let me get one more thing here and then we'll go to motion.
I mean, obviously, if we get a signed deal next week, they can.
Go all the way.
Just because he doesn't have to come back to us.
That restaurant there now is closed, right?
No.
It's still open? Who owns the restaurant equipment?
We do.
We, the Reno, or we, RSCVA?
Reno.
I think it's us, isn't it, Robert?
Yes.
It is us.
Robert Chisel, my understanding is it's owned by the city of Reno, same with the...
So how are we going to dispose of all of that? Are we going to have an auction? We're going to, I mean, that's part of that. We should start looking at, because that could help offset these costs.
Yeah, there's been some talk that we would also.
Reuse some.
Reusing some. They wouldn't be used until we get up onto the fourth floor, I wouldn't think, but there is some minor stuff we would use.
I'm fine with that. I just want to know who owns it so we know how that's going to work.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about some reuse. I don't know if there's anything in the ground floor that we would need to reuse it for when we build that little.
When we bought it, we bought everything.
I don't know that there'd be much that we could do.
Yeah, but we'd look at it when we do the fourth floor remodel.
Yeah.
So there's storage there to store all that stuff somewhere?
I don't know if we've gotten that far yet.
Okay. And then are we replacing any of the bowling lanes this year?
No.
Upstairs?
No, we'll replace those next year, after 13.
And we're putting some bowling lanes on Virginia Street?
Four lanes under the arch.
And where are those lanes coming from?
They are bringing those.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, they'll bring those and build those under the arch.
That's part of what they're doing? They're bringing, is it new stuff?
I'm assuming it's the one they used last year at the US Open in Cowboy Stadium.
Okay.
Right?
My understanding is they're traveling lanes and they just pick them up.
They did the same thing in Cowboy Stadium last year for the US Open.
And then the total cost of this, you think is going to be 1.9 million outside of your cost here, so 1.9 million for construction?
Correct.
That's for this project.
Right. But is that with, if you took out the corner or not? Because that probably adds a lot onto this.
That's looking at taking that corner or including.
So that would include taking that corner out?
Yeah.
Now, I got to ask the hard question. You got stuck here. You guys haven't been very good so far projecting costs. How, did you add some in, some cushion here so it's not going to come back? Well, it's 2.4 million. Is it going to be 1.9?
We're going to, that's...
Don't look around. You got stuck here.
Some of the, some of the things I've been hearing lately with regards to subcontractors and what they're doing, you know, I can't guarantee anything. It sounds like some of their subcontractors' costs are going up now, but based on our...
But isn't that why we pay you guys the oversight and stuff, to give us a decent estimate? I mean, that's, that's what's hard for us to do, this budgeting is, if you think it's going to be 2.3, we should say it's not going to be more than 2.3.
We'll...
If it's going to be 2.3, I don't know that we're going to get it built.
Well, and that's my problem too, because we're right on the edge of how much money we have.
I know.
And we adjust our finishes essentially to accommodate the budget that we're shooting for.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve and authorize them to get started now with a limited budget of the $10,000 until the signed agreement's done with USBC.
Have a motion, second.
I think you ought to up that a little bit, Dwight, because you don't know when you're going to sign that. You know, even if, I wouldn't mind even 20,000 so they can get working on it.
The only reason I said 10 is because that's what he said. I mean, if you want to make 20.
I know, but they've underestimated everything else.
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful we're done next week.
But he's also, he's also, I mean, is, what if you don't get that letter next week? Then they have to come back to us again to say, can we have another 10,000? I'll do what you want, but I...
I don't mind making it, I'll amend it to make it 20. I don't, I mean, I think Fred said the next couple of weeks wouldn't be more than 10.
But if you don't get that letter, then they're stuck.
Yeah, up to 20, so I'll end my motion up to 20.
Okay, raise it to 20. All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Chisel, you have this one?
No, it's with my brother, so I respectfully stand down.
For the record, Jill Olson, Finance. This is just the next action that needs to be taken by the city council. The medium-term obligation that we submitted to Department of Taxation to approve the financing of the parking meters was approved. So now, according to NRS, we just need to have the approval recorded in the minutes of the city of Reno, and this is the action to do that.
I thought they were going to come back to us and give us an update on what's going on.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The update on the contract is separate from processing the original medium-term obligation. This is a follow-up relating to the medium-term obligation and we have, I don't know if it's gotten to you, we've done a memo relating to the contract. I thought that was sent up to council already this week.
Probably was, but I didn't read it.
So this, this just needs to be done because we have to, for the Department of Taxation? It's just a requirement that we have to go through.
Mr. Mayor, give me a motion.
I'll move to, please.
Have a second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. For the record, Maureen McKissick, City Manager's Office. Item J12 is the acceptance of the funding from the State Historic Preservation Office to begin the new Heritage Center in the Amtrak Depot. Now, the council has seen this matter once or twice before, but I brought it forward today for your presentation so that all the council had the same information. This is going to be a multi-staged project and the funding we receive from the SHIPPO will enable us to do the first two stages. So I wanted to address that today and take any questions from the council if there were any.
This is something.
Mr. Guston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that Maureen has spearheaded and worked on and we've collaborated on this. We've talked about a railroad museum and there's just a lot of moving parts, but she's done a great job to go to SHIPPO to get the money and I'm going to move to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J13.
Thank you. Forgetting my kid.
Okay, we have some people that wish to speak.
Hello. I'm here again about the emergency of Mid...
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Jessica Schneider, owner slash janitor of Junkie Clothing Exchange. I'm here again to talk about the emergency of Midtown Parking. We've recruited a lot of businesses in that area and it's outdated. I do like the puck idea, which this is all new to me, I'm not very techie, but I know they want to speak. We really, really, this is such an emergency for all these businesses to make it in Midtown. We're all inviting them to come and open and the parking is outdated. That's all.
Ryan Alderman? Ryan Alderman?
Maybe we should have him go last. Ask question, he's got the presentation from Siemens, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Let's have you go later, you'll go after a while. Tim Carter?
I'm Tim Carter from Carter Brothers Ace Hardware. My comments will be very brief. I want to show my support for the Siemens proposal. I think that what we'll find is that there's a test case there that's not a lot of money that we can do in a small area and prove that it works. I think the handheld functionality that he brings to the table is critical and the technology behind it is what we need to make. We don't have a lot of geographical land down in Midtown. We have to make the most of what we've got and I think this is a great step forward and it's worth a shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you're up. You have one more you want to speak? Come on up.
Hi, council, city manager. I'm Karen Craig and I've been working for the past year or so on creating some new economic vitality for Reno. We've been looking at the idea of importing innovation as a way to counter new ideas in economic development and position Reno to attract some of the smartest technology in the world, to look at us as a place to experiment and see how they could bring technology to a smaller community like Reno that has so much energy and vitality and so much beauty and do what we do here. So we were having a meeting with Siemens, we being Nevada Venture Accelerators, about a year ago and then again about six months ago, and we're at Soup on Virginia Street for lunch. And when we got to Soup, there was a big white sign on their door saying, "We love that you're here, we love your patronage, we love you being in Midtown, but we have to tell you, you can't park here or here or here or here because you'll get towed over here and there's no parking over there and the neighbors get mad over here. And please, if you need to ask us where to park, come inside and ask us. We all have to get, work together as a neighborhood." And I really should be reading to you from their sign because I have a picture of it. So we ended up having a conversation with Siemens about what kind of interesting parking solutions they were creating around the country and what might be a solution to address the needs. So we've had two meetings with city staff, two meetings with senior staff and about five meetings with the merchants to try to listen to what their needs were for quick turnover of parking, being very respectful that the city is on an extremely tight budget and there is no new money to be found, and also wanting to marry in a new partner like Siemens Complete Transportation Technology as maybe one of the first pilots of bringing some of the most advanced technology in the country or the world to showcase in our city. And that's how we got here today. I've been so impressed with the merchants. They're so clear, they are so passionate and it's quite outstanding to get a meeting at 5 o'clock with people who own storefronts, whether it's a hardware store, a junkie exchange for clothing, new restaurants and eateries and shops that are coming in. This is a amazing group of people and they're, as they say, or as Jessica introduced herself, they're the janitor, they're the front desk, they're the ordering, they're their own financiers. And many of them are trying to lift that neighborhood up business by business by business. So part of what we've done is we've listened, we've watched your reaction, Councilman Guston, Councilwoman Sefraza. You particularly held a meeting asking for what the community wanted. We were trying to listen during that meeting. We've called in and talked to many of you on different opportunities as we could get you to explain some of the different opportunities and I think you'll get to hear about some of that today. Staff has been really terrific to work with, very open, very thoughtful. And so I feel like, as you said, Mr. Mayor, let's wow them. I'm hoping that we're going to wow them.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you very much for opportunity to meet with you. My name is Ryan Adelman, I'm with Siemens Corporation.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sure, no problem. Maybe just quickly a little bit about who we are and why we're here and why we're having this conversation. Siemens Corporation is a 140-year-old company with roughly 44,000 employees in the United States. Siemens went through a recent reorganization where they started to focus on cities and formed an infrastructure in cities sector with businesses that focus on buildings, water, energy, all around a major macroeconomic trend that we're seeing towards urbanization. So one of the things that the Infrastructure and Cities Division is doing is focusing on, as you would imagine, Siemens is a large company focusing on large cities, Los Angeles, Boston, San Francisco, but mid and small-sized cities really haven't gotten much visibility because it takes a lot of effort to kind of direct activity towards smaller and mid-sized cities. The point that Karen mentioned that we see as an opportunity for Siemens is when you view cities like Reno, Carson and Sparks and the county together as a region and treat it as a city, the opportunity for Siemens and the surrounding cities is large enough for us to potentially deploy our resources and this is an opportunity, I think, to test this idea. This is something that I'm personally involved in and I'd like to be able to say that, listen, when we look at some of these small cities, we can deploy some of the best technology in the world that we're doing on large cities, on medium and smaller-sized cities that otherwise just wouldn't get visibility maybe till 15 or 20 years down the line after kind of the fruit has been picked on big cities. So to bring us full circle, I work specifically for the Mobility and Logistics Division and we focus on everything from rolling stock to traffic controls to everything related to transportation. The, in the meetings that we have had where we've, with NVA, we were talking about several opportunities in the region, everything from streetlights to traffic, opportunities to invest in technology that improve the performance and leverage the value of cities' assets, many of which are self-funding, like streetlights and parking. In this particular case, in my meetings with the Midtown business folk in NVA, I came to learn of their situation, which is not uncommon, a lot of cities where you have a lack of enforcement and a need for parking turnover and limited funds in terms of the city being able to enforce. If cities typically had, you know, an infinite budget, they could put as many enforcement personnel on the street as possible and it wouldn't be a problem, but that's not the world we live in. So the, from what I understand the issue, we are proposing a technology that we are deploying across the country, what we call a smart parking technology.
Okay, that's what we need to get to. You can cut the clock off a minute and we all know about Siemens and get to the product we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'd rather show than tell. This is a wireless sensor. Can I, would you like to see it? Touch it, feel it? Here.
I don't know what to say, man.
This is a sensor that is placed in cement beneath a car in a parking space. It is flush-mounted so that you don't, in places like Reno where it snows, you don't shear it off when you have a plow. What this sensor allows us to do is to sense whether there is a car present or not. And the value of these sensors are twofold. the value of these sensors are twofold. They provide data, real-time, to parkers and drivers via a smart, an application that's free on their phone, to find where the parking is. So, statistics in our studies, roughly up to 30% of the congestion in cities in busy downtown areas is related to people looking for parking. Now, I know that there are differences. Reno isn't the same as downtown San Francisco, but if you have ever spent some time circling around looking for a spot, it causes a significant impact on congestion. This particular app solves that problem by allowing drivers to know exactly where the spots are, where they're open, via the app on their phone to the block. Now, the value of that is drivers are now able to find parking, but on the flip side, you have, from an enforcement standpoint, you have what we call guided enforcement, and the same data and the same application that is being pushed out to a free application on a smartphone is also going out to your law enforcement. So, rather than pursuing the traditional method of chalking tires or looking for lights on meters that may have expired, now, I know you don't have meters in Midtown at this point, but chalking tires, which is highly inefficient, you now can use that app to tell law enforcement exactly where the cars are who have exceeded their parking time. Now, the issue is, I understand it particularly with Midtown, is that you have people who are parking in prime real estate spots that are real estate from the standpoint of having easy access to businesses. The only way that you are able to enforce and change behavior through turnover is through enforcement, but enforcement is expensive. This app makes it highly effective to use significantly fewer resources, so instead of searching randomly, you know exactly where to go to write citations. So, the application, and again, the smart parking is about encouraging turnover and also making parking a lot easier to find. So, in finishing, what we're suggesting is that you run a pilot, and really more of a demonstration. So, this is proven technology, and I can give you examples all across the country where we've deployed this, including 7,000 spots in Los Angeles. But essentially, what the pilot that we're recommending is that you, we install these in 200 spaces, which we've worked with the Midtown folks and some of the, we've gotten input from staff on where are the areas of the most significant congestion that would need the most immediate benefit from a system that could increase turnover. This system is going to give you real-time data, and on a monthly basis, we can view this and see and measure, here's what it was like when the demonstration started, here's how long cars were parking on average by block, and here's how it's changed over time. So, at the end of the demonstration in the pilot, effectively, what you're getting is a report that says, here is how this system has changed parking turnover. And if you decide to ticket all of the people who potentially could have ticketed, here is the revenue you could have generated. It's up to the city to, if you want to ticket everyone, or 5, or 10, or 20%, or 50% of the vendors, that's completely up to the city. But the data will be clear, and it will be able to substantiate policy decisions on whatever you want to do, parking across the city going forward. And it's really that simple. There is no obligation to purchase anything. Siemens is discounting this in order to try to move it quickly and show some opportunity and action for the Midtown business owners, and so I have the interest of Siemens to be able to support this effort, and that's essentially what we're offering.
Okay. Questions?
I do have a video. I was told that you can see it, but maybe there's no audio, so.
Why don't you give us a short video of it?
Sure.
And let's look at it, and so you're not talking about meters or anything else like that?
No.
This is all dependent on personnel?
Excuse me?
To follow up and write tickets and stuff like that.
Exactly.
And what time limits do you set on them?
The time limits are what your time limits are. So, if it's two-hour parking, it's two hours. If it's one hour, if it's 90-minute parking, it's whatever your parking, time parking rules are in Midtown for that location.
Okay. Staff have anything?
I'm sorry. Staff have anything?
And you can change it.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. You go ahead.
Please.
Just briefly, you can change that at any time, right? So, if we start with two hours, we want to move it to 90 minutes, you can change-
Just a keystroke.
Keystroke.
Yep. Absolutely.
One of the things in the contract, because this would be a pilot, I think staff did have concerns, but if it doesn't work out within the four-month period, everyone's okay. I think just to let the merchants know, one of the issues may be collecting enough revenue to sustain the long-term goal of this thing. So, we may have to come back and look at that matrix of a paid system. I know we got to start off, but I mean, eventually, there's got to be revenue that supports the system, and I guess one of my concerns would be making it consistent with the rest of what we have going on. I'm concerned people could get confused, okay, here's a sign, but there's no meter. So, I think it's going to be an educational process, too.
Jessica, to your point, let me give you some quick statistics on parking revenue. Typically, cities only write about 5% of all of the potential violations they could write in any given day. You would need an army of personnel to be able to write all the tickets. That is changing across the country with data and technology. Now, rather than searching randomly, you know exactly where to go to write the tickets. So, the point is, the data makes it very easy to predict your revenue stream, and what this will do, and the pilot will show, is here's how many tickets you could have written, and for each of your enforcement personnel, it will say, from a management standpoint, here's how many tickets that individual person, that individual enforcement officer could have written, so you can also manage their time very well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, to that point, this is fundamentally not any different than the current system we have. It's electronic based on triggering if you're there for a violated time period. So, my question now goes back to John and to the chief. We've had our current system in where we've got the meters and with the promise that we wouldn't be spending as much time, you know, with the meter mollys out there, that they only have to go where they know there's a violation. Have we met the marks that we thought we were? Have we met the revenue projections? Or are we falling more into the category that Mr. Alder-
Adelman.
Adelman was just describing to us that cities in general leave too much on the table.
Steve Pitts, for the record, and I actually had all that data last week. Masadra, I don't have it with me today. I apologize, but I would support his initial comments in a general sense. But if I could make a suggestion, kind of off what Ms. Sifrazza's comments were, our recommendation is to support this. It's going to support business there, but you have a blend of business and residents in Midtown. And our recommendation, executive team, was to build an outreach effort into that community, because we've had several meetings. We've been to dozens of meetings, the police department with John's people and Bill's folks, but we haven't been in the community, so to speak. So, our recommendation is to use the Community Safety and Service Team and go into the neighborhood down there, network with the businesses, the residents that live in that area, conduct some surveys. It's informative. It's educational. Talk about what we're doing with this parking plan, and this whole area is going to mature over the next several months, and I think it would be beneficial for us as a city to work together to do that, and this could be the first piece, so.
So, you're in agreement that we'll create more parking just by knowing which spaces are overtime or expired?
I would say generally, yes, ma'am.
Which is the fundamental, very similar to the electronic system that we're using with the meters, although people are struggling with them.
Yes.
So, you're thinking that we have achieved that improvement?
We-
So, the vendors, the retailers, will see some improvement from this and not just yet another electronic system that we're not necessarily able to utilize?
I think they will, and I think if we create some penetration in the community or that neighborhood initially and understand what the concerns are, we've heard some today, obviously, for some business people, and of course, they support the project, and find out from the residents, that we can make sure that we are really kind of ripening the issues, we're making sure information flow is good in the neighborhood. I mean, our experience is, you've got to be in the neighborhood. We can have 100 meetings here in City Hall, and it works fairly well, but you've got to get into that neighborhood and reach out to the residents and businesses there, and I've worked with Alex on, with Bill's permission, on a plan to do that, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Guston.
You know, there've been some suggestions from the businesses, from council, and from the police department. I think this is going to be a two- or three-pronged approach. With what the chief said about the surveys, I agree with that, but I think it moves down the priority list a little bit. What we're looking at now, when Councilwoman Sifrazza and I had that town hall meeting, it was real obvious, and we said it multiple times, tell us what you want, and we're not here to tell you what to do or listen to, want to figure out how we do this for you. So, now, they've come back. One of the immediate things that the businesses have been dealing with, community development, John, not necessarily with you, but Steve Manell, I believe, is the information I have, is your favorite subject, Mr. Mayor, and that's the red curbs. And the merchants and people down there have looked and gone out and walked the area, and right now, I may not sound like much, but they've determined there are areas there that could easily be converted from red curb to parking, which is probably within 20 to 30 spaces. May not sound like much, but if you have a business and you want three or four people more in your business during the lunch hour or some other period, it's very important. So, I would suggest to staff that the first prong in the approach is, is to immediately get with the merchants or their committee and with your staff and your parking people and to take immediate action on the red curbs and convert those into parking areas, because I don't know myself why I haven't not walked it, but that is a head knocker and for people that are down there that they think immediately, they start to put a smile on their face because they see something happening. And there've been conversations, but we haven't gotten to that action stage yet, so that would be the first action. The second thing I need to ask, and Bill, you may be the most appropriate person, or the gentleman who spoke earlier, I'm looking at the Siemens report, and it talks about the 200 censored pilot program of 86,000. The cost would actually be $61.8 because that's the number they would discount it, obviously believing in their product, and I like that approach in terms of marketing, when somebody believes in their product enough to actually come off their price to prove to you that it works. The Reno investment will be $25,000, but that leaves $36,000. Is there any identified number right now where, is that true? Is that $61,000, that $25,000? I think Councilman Aziz, you had a figure somewhere, too. What's the real number to do this?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, and that is a really good question, one of the comments I wanted to get to, is that our understanding in the conversation with Siemens, who we've found to be very beneficial, and I think as a staff are very excited about the program that they're providing to us, but our concern is not just the immediate, but long-term, you know, what will the city be getting into or what will we be presenting as far as this moving forward? And it looks like we would need to come up with $25,000, actually $24,999, because that's the only way we can move forward without going through a bidding process. That would be the contribution that the city would make towards this Siemens pilot project, which would be a four-to-five-month test period. The question then becomes, what happens when we hit month six? And if this is a successful program, which we believe it will be, the only thing that we think can support the costs is not going to be writing tickets for enforcement, but probably moving towards a paid parking program. So, part of what the chief was talking about is our concern, not that, you know, we don't believe what we're hearing from people, but paid parking is one of those things where it has a very real impact on people because it'll change parking behavior, and we want to make sure that everybody out there understands that that's what we're going to do if we move forward potentially, because I don't see how we're going to come up with the money, which is $144,000 over two years, if we go beyond month five. So, that was our initial concern at staff, is making sure everybody's upfront and aware, and as Councilwoman Sifrazza said, if the businesses understand that this is a successful program with Siemens, then the next logical step is to do a paid parking program. It also fits, in terms of what the chief said, with the red curb issue, which is, we're very much on board with getting rid of some of those curb cuts and turning those into parking, but what we need to do, and this is from experience, is we need to talk each and every one of those property owners. The reason Public Works is probably a little nervous about it is that even though sometimes those curb cuts aren't being used, people see them as a property right, and so if somebody parks in front of them without, you know, telling them upfront, that's what's going to happen. It can cause some problems. So, I think it's very important for us to get in the community real quickly, talk to all the owners who have those curb cuts that aren't being used, tell them that we're going to turn those into parking spaces, and make sure they're on board.
Two things about your comments, if you will. I understand the long run and the long term, but when you're a small business person, long-term might be a week. I mean, you need business in your store, and you need it from day one. I know. It's contrary to some things, but you need to, not you, but businesses need to turn, and they need to have action and have people there. I think when you're talking about the six months, with what the gentleman explained, Mr. Adelman explained, the amount of data that's available, I mean, we're going to know in two or three months whether this is working towards a conclusion or not. We're not going to have to wait till month five and say, what are we going to do in month six? I think we're going to have that information along the way. I also believe that if we institute this, we're, I was told, and you can confirm these numbers, Mr. Adelman can confirm the numbers, that to pay for this fee, you're talking about one and a half citations a month in the 200 spaces over this period of time to pay this fee. Is that a number that you're familiar with, or do you understand? Is that correct?
I don't know if we've, as staff, come up with a number that we believe would be necessary. I know the chief probably have a better handle on that, but certainly will know, as you said, within a several months, how this is really working as far as enforcement. We will move the community service officers down there, and they'll focus on that area to see what we can do to change behavior first and foremost. Secondly, to generate income that would pay for the program.
I gave you half the information. I really should probably ask somebody, or if somebody could come forward and say, yes, that's true. And I believe that's predicated from your report on a $30 violation fine. Mr. Adelman, or John, do you subscribe to that, that, again, when we're looking for money to pay for this, obviously, that the citation's one and a half?
For the record, John Flansworth, Director of Public Works. Our current overtime violation for parking is $20, and if that's paid on time, then that would be the charge. So, what you're saying is, at $30 per space per month, one and a half citations would cover that cost. Obviously, with another area that you're patrolling, you'll have additional costs potentially in CS, you know, because community service officers' time, or there's the opportunity cost, what are you not doing when you're doing that? But that is the premise.
I'm not suggesting the number. I'm just reading the report, and it says the parking fine would be $30, and it also says the hours of operation would be eight, and I probably would have to ask the merchants if that's sufficient, knowing not everybody opens at 8:00 in the morning, some open at 10:00, some open at 11:00, and so on, but that sounds reasonable, the hours of operation. Are you getting that same kind of input?
Well, that very much is what we want to know from the community. I think John maybe knows specifically from the meetings, but we really want to target to turning over the parking when the businesses need it, so we're very much in sync with the community as far as how we set this program up. We were told two hours was the target that they felt was most valuable, so that's why we're moving towards a two-hour parking limit.
We talked about the puck, if you will, in the street, but there was also a conversation with staff and with merchants about signage, and I believe the number that was, that I got, there were somewhere in the neighborhood of 71 signs that are in the area that would have to be refaced, if they will, or new pole, new sign put up. Can you give me some information from your perspective?
We had an estimate of about, we think it'll be a little less than this, but about $24,000, a little more than $24,000 to change the sign program over to the two hours in the parking area that we're talking specifically about for the 200 spaces, and that's something that we will take care of. The city would take care of that cost.
So, in terms of, and I get some other council people to chime in here, but in terms of the pilot program, it could well be signage and enforcement for the next few months and see if that determined the attitudes or the habits of the people parking there. Is that what you're recommending as opposed to the Siemens project that we'd have to find extra money for?
I think the subtle difference between us and what Siemens is asking for, and perhaps the businesses, is that first, we go in there and really do a more detailed assessment. I understand the urgency, and certainly, we as staff are, want to do everything we can to help the businesses. So, if the decision is that you want to go forward with the Siemens pilot program, then we are very much in support of that. We just want to make sure the council understands what the logical next steps are and what our costs are going to be. And what we can identify right now, it's about $50,000 roughly, 25 for the Siemens part, and about another 25 for the signs, and then an undetermined dollar amount, which really is not really a hard cost, a soft cost of moving the community service officers out of other areas and to focus on this area. So, that would be the true cost to the city for this four-to-five-month period.
Okay. Let me, Jessica, can I ask you a question? Would you come forward, please? In listening to what Mr. Thomas just said, and we're talking about the signage and the Siemens project, can you prioritize those in your mind, how you think that would help the merchants, and what would be the most immediate relief?
Well, here's the thing. There's two-hour parking in front of Midtown Eats and Shays already. There's two-hour parking in front of my building. It's just not enforced. So, I think- So I think 25,000 to me is, don't we have a boneyard of signs that we could recycle or, for more signs, that seems like a lot of money? It's enforcing it is the problem. So there's a truck, Casey and Christian went on vacation, they own soup, so my husband and I have been walking down every morning and unlocking the doors for the staff. So the three restaurants that were right there that opened, their employees are parking there all day, even though there's signs that say two-hour parking, even though I'm constantly telling that. So it's the enforcing. So there's signs up, I mean, I have signs, so it seems like we just need a few more signs and enforcing. That's what makes sense to me. And I figured we could recycle some two-hour parking signs for not 25,000. Just my opinion.
Mr. Guston, one of the big problems we have is our administrators don't follow up on collecting these parking fees. And I hear there's an astronomical number that we have setting that we haven't even gone after to collect. And I mean, it would pay for this whole program if we could just get those and they would quit dismissing them when we go before the administrators.
Well, I know, Mr. Ad, because that was a question that was in my mind when we were talking about the fines, is that every year when we have the meeting with the court, we talk about a new collection agency and who's doing this and what, the numbers, I don't know if the city clerk even knows what the numbers are now that we're owed, but they're six-figure numbers.
That's right. We need to meet with the court and we need to meet with the other administrator.
But, Mr. Aziz. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. It sounds like, and again, I'm glad that Ms. Schneider came forward, it seems that obviously we need something to happen right away and the enforcement is a key issue and that seems like it's a number that can get some results. And we don't get the research and the background, the information from Siemens in doing that, but to me, that would be a minimum. I would think we would, the red curbs and the signage are the two, I mentioned this is a multi-pronged approach, but I would suggest to council that those would be the two things that are a minimum to start with. And then we discuss further about Siemens, if that money wants to be invested now or how we want to move forward on that. So that's just my recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Aziz, you had something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And I really am glad this is coming up now and more about how it's coming up, that the business owners along there are talking about the parking issues. And I'm glad Mr. Kelly's here because I read your downtown paper. And I think people have to understand that parking meters and parking enforcement is built for the local businesses. It's not for the city to make money. We just try to keep it even balanced to pay for the enforcement to help the local businesses. But as I see this one happening is, as a pilot program, this gives us the information to see if we want to take the next step. And I understand what Mr. Thomas says, to decide whether, are the parking tickets enough? I think it might be enough information to go out to the business owners after five or six months and say, maybe paid parking is the way to go. And you have more information to go talk to everyone. You'll have more information about which streets there are people parking on. That doesn't mean there'd be paid parking on every street. You can identify further on what happens. I believe that Ms. Schneider had it correct, is right now there's two-hour parking and we're just not enforcing it at all. I think that happens in a lot of areas. So the soft cost of having an enforcement officer down there is something we should be doing now and we're just not doing. So this, to me, brings it forward of something we should do. So what I see as, in the order of things, is the red curbs have to be fixed because you can't go put the pucks in unless you've made that a parking place. So we have to go look at that and I think that could be done fairly quickly. And if people have complaints about that, they can come to us. And the signs, I agree that the signs shouldn't cost that much. And when the business owners there said they would help put money into this, maybe that's what we ask them to pay for, the one sign in front of your building, is that what you'd pay for that sign to be there? And then I believe we should do the pilot project so that we know what's going to happen at the end of the day and we can look at all that. Right now, we're speculating about, maybe we'll choose not to do it anymore. Maybe we'll choose that paid parking is better than the two-hour parking. But I want to ask on this, from Mr. Alderman from Siemens, your price for the 200 was 24,000 approximately? And you could get those in in what frame of time?
So, so the timeframe that we're working from right now is about 45 days. So 45 days from, from purchase order agreement to the beginning of installation.
So if we started now, you could get them in by July 1st, which is the busiest season, which we want to really see what happens there.
Give or take. And it goes in very fast. It would take about under, just under two weeks to install.
And I also, and the app is available and all that stuff is available right then?
That's right.
Okay.
As soon as you put them in.
And, and I did, I'll disclose that I have met with you on a couple of occasions. And if we did do this immediately, and I forget whether you told me that you would do this or not, because the funding is different with us, if we had an agreement with you, would you take payment after July 1st to fit our scheduling because of fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. So Dan, I think we should go that route.
Ms. Adra.
This will be for Ms. Schneider. I think you answered the question that I asked when I spoke before. What will we be getting after we do this? Will it be really any different than what you have now? And virtually what you said, and again, it's what you were just also identifying, Dave, is that the two hours already exist, we're just not enforcing it. So do we need to put money against this right now to, if we're not enforcing it now, what gives us the insurance we'll be able to once the pucks are in place? Other than it tells us you don't have to go to all 14 spaces on that street, you only have to go to two spaces on that street because they're, they're the only ones who are in violation. But that was really the genesis of my question was, you guys need assistance right now. Is it enforcement will give you what you need right now or is it a puck?
Well, I think the puck, I mean, just like he said, when you drive around looking for a parking place, I see that all the time when I am at soup. They'll just drive around, drive around, then they just give up. So I think that app, people really are using apps. I just think it's, it's just stupid simple to me. I really, I really, I really like the idea. And it would just give us so much data and then we would know.
So it really comes down to our commitment and our ability to be able to respond with or without the puck to start enforcing that two-hour limit.
And on my side, I will educate everyone, the power of social media, just my emails alone and Plato's closet emails alone, just 12,000, all the Midtown emails that I, I'm like, all right, the pucks are in, couple of tickets, it'll get around. People will understand. I understand, like, educating them, that's, I will do my part. I will tell people that if you're there longer than two hours, it'll spread fast.
Thank you.
Mr. Adelman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I keep interrupting.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Carter, I wanted to, did you have a comment to make about the parking and rectifying the situation in the short term?
I'm just sitting back here listening. I think that it's, like Jessica said, I don't know what to tell you about the tickets that get written that don't get paid and don't get, okay? But from an enforcement perspect, from an enforcement perspective, with the pucks, and this is where I see the value of the puck, you know, your enforcement guy can log on his cell phone and decide to go write tickets this hour or not. Stay uptown and when his cell phone tells him to go down to St. Lawrence Street and write three tickets, then go down, write three tickets and go back downtown. It seems to me that the pilot area, the enforcement becomes super, super efficient. So now after you write the ticket, I don't know what to tell you about getting paid for it, but you know what I mean? We'll bill you.
That'll be up to us. Mr. Adelman, you have another one? Mr. Dort.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thanks. And Bernie, did you have something you wanted to add?
What have I made? Bernie Carter, for the record, the staff actually prepared for us in one of our meetings a line copy of the area that showed the different parking that are, that are in this general area. And as a result of that conversation, thank you, as a result of that conversation, we actually went out and looked at all of the red areas that were marked here and then additional red areas. But in response to Ms. Adra's, there are side streets like St. Lawrence Street that is unlimited parking, so it doesn't have two-hour parking on it now. And part of, that would be part of the program. So on some of these side streets that have unlimited parking or different restrictions, that would be inclusive in the two-hour parking area. The other thing that is a result of this in meetings with staff is that we would focus on the top half of the South Virginia Street. And so I believe, yeah, thank you. So I believe that the signage requirements, as a matter of fact, oh, okay.
Wow, that's cool.
Yeah. Yeah, we're.
Bring you boys from Ely, you found out.
That's exactly. That's exactly. So I believe that that'll also help with the signage cost. I believe that John said that it'll actually drop it about in half because you're only putting half the signs up. And just a result of that, that'll make a difference. And that's part of the reason that we believe the top half of it makes sense and one of the reasons that we just can't enforce what we have now, because these side streets have no limitations on them at all. Okay? Thank you very much.
No homes on those side streets or anything?
Pardon?
Homes?
It's all businesses.
All businesses, that's what I thought. But I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, no, there, I don't believe there's any, though there is one, one that has, there's some commercial residences down there that are on apartment complex type thing.
Yes, and apartments are right in there.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be tagged or anything?
No, they're, they actually have two-hour parking in front of their building currently.
Okay. Mr. Dort.
Any questions? Thanks, Bernie.
Thank you.
And then for staff, I guess, our current contract with our current provider for our parking meters or whatever, the parking, paid parking downtown, would this infringe on that at all? I mean, do they have any kind of exclusive rights?
I don't believe so, but I think John would know more about the details. I think that was per a specific area.
I think we, specific areas that we identified in this, but I just wasn't sure.
Didn't include that area, so, right.
Okay. And, and how is, how are these different, other than these might actually get installed, how are these different than the ones that we're supposed to have in our current system?
Well, I guess first and foremost, the concept we're talking about is you wouldn't have to go to a kiosk to pay.
Right, but they're still talking about putting the meters, these, something similar to this in, they would identify when their meter expires so that it would let the officers know to go ticket them.
Right. If we went to a pay program and those pucks were in a space that was, for example, you paid for two hours and you didn't pay, it would tell the enforcement officer that you either didn't pay to park there or you were beyond your two hours. But initially, it's simply to tell the enforcement officer that the person's parked beyond the two hours so they can come right on and take it.
Right, but couldn't, is what I'm, I guess where I'm going is, couldn't the system, other than, they still haven't put them in, I mean, couldn't that system just be expanded to include this and we would only have the one program to deal with?
I suppose if the current program we have doesn't succeed, then this certainly would be a pilot program for an option to do with other places in the city, yes.
It would get tied into our meters.
I was saying the opposite. Couldn't, could the current company we're using do this?
Use these? I don't know.
And put the pucks in now that they're.
That's, that's the point I made is, is they were supposed to put them in a long time ago.
Use their puck and do it all the way.
And we're not using them yet, but we were supposed to be. I mean, we're supposed to be, I mean, it's a similar program. It's just, it was tied to the meter in their program, whereas here it's not tied to a meter, it's just tied to a time. But I'm assuming it's the same technology or roughly the same technology.
Generally, generally similar technology, yes. So the difference you have between a time restricted parking, like a two-hour parking and paid parking, is the fact that if you don't have a system that tells you what time they started, you end up doing a two-hour walk-around and chalk tires type of a event. So it's a totally different operation.
That I understand. And that's, but, but that's what I'm saying is it sounds like, at least from what we were told, we haven't had a chance to see it yet. I mean, it sounds like the same technology.
A detection push enforcement technology.
Yes. And, and wouldn't we want to just have one program feeding that information back to our officers instead of two programs feeding that information back to our officers?
That may be what we have.
Yeah. If we put this in, we don't have that. If we go, if we go to these guys for everything? I mean, that's all I'm saying is, is it just, I mean, it seems like we've got, to have one company running, running one program here and then running a different program in another part of town, doesn't sound real efficient. Now, I will say that I don't know that what we've got is efficient, but it just doesn't seem to me like having two different programs running is, is real efficient. And if that's the case, if we are having the problems that we're having with the other company, should we be talking to Siemens about doing all, our entire parking plan for the, for the city?
After we do it through the trials, we'll find out.
Yeah, absolutely. That's where I'm at. Competition is healthy. If they're going to come in there and do the job, then they may have other options in the city.
I mean, because that was, I mean, the nice thing about what we did was there was no upfront cost to us on the other one.
Yeah, no, one of the whole purposes of the current system we were going to have was our parking enforcement people could cover wider areas.
Absolutely.
Because they knew where to go.
But they never put it in place.
Depending on whether we have enough people to go down there, if this system was in place, they would only have to go down there when they needed to and not just mark tires all the time. So it was supposed to save us money by freeing up that enforcement team to go do that. And now it isn't. Now we're still going out and looking at every, every car and every space from what I understand.
Not very efficient, John. Mr. Guston.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if anybody has any other comments, that I'd like to move that, the staff, we look, right away, we implement the plan of the red curbs, eliminating those and finding those extra parking spaces that the merchants say they're there. And I guess you've had meetings with them, you have a couple of maps. And I understand that some of the mapping they have read where you don't or vice versa, if we start with that. I think that's, that's a first priority. That'll give some, as soon as we can get that done, immediate relief. Then I think we move forward again with the, the signs. And in complementing that with the enforcement, it's already out there, but with, with the chief and moving that those new two-hour signs be installed as, as soon as we can get those up and the enforcement start immediately, depending on where, I guess the chief's left, but whatever he can do, because obviously he's aware of it and that the merchants are aware of it, that if it was enforced, we'd be better off with that. And then also, I would add to this, the pilot program for Siemens be established with the caveat that when the agreement is put together, they will be installed within the 45 days and the billing will come to the city after July 1, which obviously, Councilman Aziz, good point, it affects our, our budget for next year, makes it probably more palatable for us to get that done. And then one last, very important, major portion of this, that once the Siemens project is installed, that somebody from your company come to the 15th floor in the mayor's office and put the app on his phone. He tends to, he tends to park everywhere and so he needs to understand where that'd be taken care of. And then obviously, the chief had mentioned that, but I'll put that also in the motion, that when he volunteered the survey and the interaction, he said, we have to be in the community, to be in the community down there and talk to the merchants and see how we can foster this program and make it more effective for them. Because as Councilwoman Sforza, when, in our, our town hall meeting, I think was very open and above the board about, the better that they do, the better the city does. And that's what we need to work together to get this done. So let's help them as soon as we can because there are new businesses moving in there all the time and the more people that go there, the better off we all are.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second?
A second, Dan, is that, is that putting the app on the mayor's phone part of the motion, so it's requirement?
That's a primary thing.
I hope it is.
Plus an alarm goes off in our 45 minutes, so he needs to move his car.
Yeah.
Good point.
We can work that out, can't we? I thought we could.
One more question, Mr. Mayor. John, was our current, and I can't remember the name of our company that is doing our metered parking that doesn't have the electronic trigger yet, were they advised that we were having this discussion today?
No, they were not.
And why haven't they put in the electronic triggers yet?
As they mentioned to you in their January, I believe it was 25th meeting, they were going to have everything completed by February. going to have everything completed by February, we, we have not completed that at, at this time. We are scheduled to have them come in in one of our June meetings, that was requested by Councilmember Azzi, to give an update on where they are. And we are pursuing them on completion of their project.
Any other questions? Have them, yes ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a, a full aware again, I had mentioned this before, that it probably will transition into a paid, um, parking, because I think that in order to generate enough revenue for it to be sufficient, that it's probably gonna transition that way. But I think, um, this is a win-win. They've, they've worked their butts off, I remember meeting in Sushi Pier five years ago, Jessica, about midtown and, and believing in it, and, uh, I, I mean, go get them, they've done tremendous work, um, along that corridor. I think the demonstrated, uh, demonstration project Councilman Gus and I did with the lighting, I think it's just all happening now, and so congratulations.
They've put a lot of money in, the Carters have put a lot of money in, so, you know, we need to support them and work it out. And Siemens has something that'll tie into that puck, so we can, we can work with them somewhere, and thank you for agreeing to set my app up, so I'll know where to find a parking spot. All right, I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Yeah. That was a free one. All right, now we're gonna go, because we got time till 3:30. Item K1, boards and commission appointments? Neighborhood, Ward 3 Neighborhood Advisory?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to, uh, appoint Kristoff Nicklin to the Ward 3 Neighborhood Advisory Board.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Northeast Neighborhood?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to appoint Corey Bond and Kyle Isaacson. Although I think the majority of this Neighborhood Advisory Board is probably in Jessica's ward now.
For which one?
Northeast.
Oh, well, take the appointment.
Because I tried to merge the two, you didn't want to do that.
What's that?
Merge the two, so there'd be one.
Well...
Because we've had a lot of problems filling vacancies in, on the northeast one.
I know.
Well, go ahead and make your motion, don't worry about the consolidation. At most, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Recreation and Parks?
One more. I'm sorry.
I'll go, I'll go last.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I'll appoint Patricia Weaver, who do you appoint?
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of future agenda items? Mr. Azzi.
Yeah, I have a, a strange one, Mr. Mayor. I had someone come to me yesterday and say that they just flew into town with their daughter, and they looked at the airport, and the advertising there that they have at the airport is for topless bars and stuff like that, and it says, you know, it's amazing that people show up to town, and this is what we're most proud of, to tell them the very first thing. And I know that they cannot discriminate who they put on there, but I think we should look at, can we advertise in the airport, or get someone else to advertise to replace that revenue source, and say, "We want to take up those banners."
Well, we should do, we should talk to the airport authority about doing that, and see what they can do or not do.
And I know they're in the same position we are, they cannot refuse that kind of advertising, but we certainly could replace it with different kinds of advertising, because that's, that's the first thing that people see when they come to town.
That's right.
No different than the taxicab tops.
Mr. Guston?
Mr. Mayor, I have a future agenda item, and I will try to be brief about this, but had a meeting last week ago, Wednesday, at the California Building, concerning group homes on Pass Drive, the Pass Drive Davidson area, and, um, got a handful of emails back from people, had tremendous amount of comment there, and I won't belittle, belabor the point anyway, but the city of Reno and their ordinances are strapped, and their hands are tied, because of the fair housing, um, that was, in the Johnson administration, started back in 1964. In 2007, we actually had a state law that said, you can have group homes within 1,500 feet of a home, or 2,500 feet of a school, et cetera. That was overturned in 2008, and so our ordinance is not pertinent, and we cannot deny that. But I, the people there wanted to hear their voice heard, so I'm gonna ask that this be put on the agenda, I have all the information for staff on May 23rd.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good. Yes, Mr. Azzi?
Um, a, agenda item, I was approached about doing, um, some urban farms, specifically on the lot across from the Discovery Museum.
This is for future?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, for, uh, to allow, um, folks who have vacant lots, um, to allow urban farms to go there. Right now, would require all kinds of permitting and, uh, land use changes, so I don't know how to word that, but it would be a, a change to Title 18. There are several people who want to do things on these vacant lots within the area, so...
Okay, so they'll come back to us at the May 23 meeting? All right, Mr. Guston, excuse me.
Um, as we discussed earlier on the consent agenda item, take a look at, is there zoning that we can put into place for escort services in proper locations?
Okay. Any other future? Everybody finally woke up? Excuse me. Now, um, any reports on conferences or professional meetings? Uh, discussion, potential direction staff, about privileged license for salvage yards, precious metals? Mr. Azzi?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this one was about whether, we were talking about whether salvage yards and precious metals had, um, to have a privileged license, and I believe they don't right now. So it was to give staff time, uh, enough work to research this, to see whether they should have to have them, um, to follow up on people taking, I mean, it was, uh, people stealing copper from NV Energy lines, and, you know, I don't know where they're selling this stuff, it all seems to disappear.
Go ahead, Mr. Cal.
Uh, for the record, Craig Skaw from the Reno City Attorney's Office. I sent a memo to each of you, and it's an area that is very heavily regulated in NRS and RMC. It does require a secondhand merchant's license in order to receive, uh, copper in virtually any form, and many other metals and other types of junk or secondhand merchandise. There is a, um, a lot of reporting requirements, that are daily reporting requirements, where you have to identify the person you received it from, you have, the employee who receives it has to identify himself, there have to be descriptions of the merchandise, there have to be, um, in order for the junk dealer to then distribute, uh, ship the items, they have to apply to the police for a permit and describe all the items, there are provisions that authorize and require holding periods for those, uh, those items. Um, uh, in other words, I think there, I've only touched on part of it, but the secondhand dealer also has to be licensed, uh...
Is that just for copper, though? I mean, the problem...
Absolutely not, that's for all different kinds of metals, and includes copper. And includes wire, uh, there is special reporting requirements, if something comes in that has the insulation burned, then they have to go to extra links to prove that they had a right to that, that copper. Uh, there, there really are, and there's a memo that has a summary of the, um, of the regulations, as well as copies of all the, uh, state and city regulations.
It's like, I guess the follow-ups, it sounds like there's a lot of ordinances, have we done any operations to make sure they follow that?
Uh, the police department, um, has regular reporting requirements, and they do track those, but, uh, they would be the ones to answer that.
Dave Evans, Deputy Police Chief. Yes, um, Councilman, we do have reporting requirements, they do report daily to us. Uh, we are in the process right now, uh, implementing a system, not only for the pawn shops, but also for the secondhand dealers. It will be more automated, so, uh, it's a company called Leeds Online, and, um, what that'll allow us to do is get real-time information as those things are getting, getting taken or received. That stuff will go into a computer system and be instantly available to our detectives, and it will also link those places together, show us what they're doing, kind of in more real time, so we are working on that right now.
Yeah, my question is more, is, I know that they've got reporting requirements, and there's probably more business licenses, do they go in, like the sting operations with underage drinking, with someone with copper wire that's burnt, to make sure they actually follow the, the procedures? That's the other problem, to make sure that they're following those procedures.
And we, we have not done those operations, um, I can't speak for business licenses, but, uh, we have not, no.
And I think, so, all, we're trusting that they're being upfront, but if they never have a sting operation, we see this with underage drinking, we have to go out and out and out, and everybody just thinks they're gonna get away with it. And so they have to, maybe that's just all I need, there's enough regulation, but, um, if there's no follow-up, the regulations...
We could certainly work with business license to look at that possibility.
That'd be terrific, I think.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether it would be just business license, or who would enforce this, these fees, it might not be the, I honestly hate to tie up police time with, with that kind of stuff, when I think it's more business license and...
Well, you bring up a good point, we do get accurate reporting, but again, uh, that's based on what they give us, you know?
Right.
And so if they are selectively, uh, reporting, that is something we can look into.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, recognition of good deeds?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Manager, I'm Chris Good, Director of Neighborhood Services, and I have a few, uh, items to report under good news. Uh, before I get to the presentation, I, I do want to point out that it was brought to my attention today, that today, May 9th, is the anniversary of the day in 1868 that the Central Pacific Railroad laid tracks through Lakes Crossing, uh, which was soon to become, uh, Reno, named after the recently fallen Civil War general. So today's an important anniversary for our community, 144 years ago today.
We had a short timeout here, just one minute, one of the councilmen's running around with his mouth, and, go ahead with your good deed, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, last Sunday was the Rockin' River Marathon, and half marathon, um, it was a, a grand success downtown. We are truly in the, the season for special events, the special event season is truly upon us. Over 4,000 runners, um, over 500 volunteers helped out to make this event a success, and that included, uh, a lot of high school age kids to help, uh, make the event happen. So that's a, uh, another example of the community coming together to make a special event successful. Another special event, Food Truck Fridays, you know, it's one thing to launch, uh, a recurring special event, as they did a month ago, and the first Food Truck Fridays was a success, I'm glad to tell you that last Friday, the second Food Truck Friday was also very much a success. We introduced the Beer Garden concept to this, uh, event last Friday, and that seemed to work out very well. Uh, the social media seemed to love this thing, the newspaper, it reports very positively on it, the word is getting out that Food Truck Friday is the place to be, on the first Friday of each month in the evening, uh, right downtown at the city center. I would like to point out that May is Older Americans Month, and a number of activities, including the Senior Games, is, uh, part of that effort in Reno. Monday, April 30th, was the kickoff for Older Americans Month, uh, and the Sierra Nevada Se- Senior Games. This year's theme is, this year's theme is Never Too Old to Play. 280 seniors attended that event, uh, there was a presentation of colors, the National Anthem, there were musical performances, there was even a chance to participate in the Zumba dance, and I would like to point out that in the bottom right-hand photograph on the screen, your illustrious Parks Recreation and Community Services Director Julie, Julie Conway is seen, uh, doing her, her Zumba act there. And staff did point out to me, Mr. Mayor, that there will be many more opportunities this month for you to get involved and get up and do the Zumba dance yourself.
Well, I, I really appreciate that, but I really, uh, I really have a little comment about this, since I went to the Older Americans Month party, our city manager, our city manager registered me to be in the pole vaulting contest. Now, they don't make poles strong enough to carry me, uh, much less get off the ground, but I, I think that was rather insulting, Mr. Manager. And Jesus, why'd you have to use that picture in the middle for?
I, I wanted to show that our mayor was there and part of the activities.
Well, do me a favor, leave me out.
The, uh, the Sierra Nevada Senior Games do continue, a number of, uh, events have already occurred, uh, basketball skills, the walk race, fitness, uh, weightlifting, and swimming have happened, uh, but other activities are gonna continue happening throughout the month. The most popular events as part of the Senior Games are table tennis and track and field. We have 66 seniors so far registered, it's never too late, you can go to Reno.gov/seniors to get involved in that fun action. The McCarran Ranch Preserve officially opened to the public last Saturday, May 5th, uh, this has been a years-long project of the Nature Conservancy, but the city of Reno has been a partner in this effort. Uh, along four and a half miles of Truckee River shoreline, it includes new riverbeds, riffle sections to support native fish, and the bugs that native fish eat. We, they replaced, uh, non-native vegetation with native plants, uh, and restored the river to a meandering natural flow, uh, to more, to reflect the way it was, um, before people came along and started messing with it. Uh, Mary Connolly represented Senator, Senator Harry Reid's office, and thanked all who made the river restoration there possible, including the city of Reno. As I say, it's a nature conservancy project, but, but Reno is a partner. Reno was recognized, and the city's logo has been included on all of the educational signage installed at the preserve, and there's a photograph there of one of those signs. Finally, the Rotary Plaza at the CAC, uh, came into being last weekend, last time I, or, or two weekends ago, I'm sorry, last time I reported to you, I told you that this event was coming up, well, it occurred, and it was a grand success. It happened, uh, Saturday, April 28th, over 100 volunteers came out, uh, many from the Reno Rotary, also representatives of the, of the Boy Scouts, people from Home Depot came out, and students from the ACE Charter School. Uh, this is the former site of Tent City at the Community Assistance Center, so it is now filled with trees, flowers, benches, storage cubbies, and shade nets, even a planter box with grapevines. And I would just like to provide you a quote, Sandy Isham, the Development and Community Relations Officer for Volunteers of America, she, she said to me in an email, "This was one of the most joyous projects I have ever experienced." That says a lot for the director, from, from the, person from the Volunteers of America. Um, this is really the community coming together to improve the quality of life for the people we serve at the CAC. And that is your good news for May 9th.
Chris, I'd like to suggest, I, I don't think you did it last time, maybe if you did, I, I'm sorry, I apologize if I missed it, but the good news about the, the Urban Forestry Commission with the sensory garden plant, planting at Idowell Park, that'd be something that, to salute them, because the volunteers, I believe, were from Harrah's, and, I'm sorry, I don't remember the other one, but keep Truckee Metals beautiful.
Caesar's.
Who was the other one, Dave?
Caesar's was one of them.
Maybe it was Caesar's, yeah, Caesar's, and, those people need to be saluted also.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Item M2 is update regarding the fire consolidation. Chief, just, pardon me? Oh, oh, we have a speaker. Well, it's down there.
Thank you, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Manager, City Council. Uh, first, I want to apologize for not being here on time, uh, for F5, that was my intended speaking point, uh, and I do appreciate very much that, I understand it was supported, the TA was supported unanimously. I just wanted the council to understand, uh, where that arrived from, I know I'm a little off-subject here, if you'll indulge me just a moment here, uh, but, with working, uh, with the, your staff so closely over the last couple of months on that SAFER grant, and on the, uh, deconsolidation, which we're now discussing, uh, it, it became very apparent that the SAFER grant was going to be monumentally important to the continued service of this community, and particularly the citizens of Reno. And furthermore, that we were gonna be asking, we, the Fire Department in general, uh, and my association in particular, was gonna be asking quite a bit of council, in, in accepting that SAFER grant that you so graciously did, uh, on Friday, or on, excuse me, on Thursday. And if we were going to ask such a, a request, that we should also pony up, and, and be a partner in that. And therefore, that TA was generated unanimously by my team, uh, supported by my E-Board, and I'm very confident it'll be ratified, uh, through its 30 to three-day process, uh, by our membership, so that we can continue to be partners in the economic recovery, uh, of this community, uh, in going forward, and allow the chief to have a stable, um, budget in order to work from, and that, uh, again, that's, uh, that these concessions, uh, will go forward and will be utilized, again, for staffing, or the needs of the Fire Department, but that it was, uh, derived out of our, uh, our team, and supported unanimously, I just wanted the council to understand that, and again, I thank you for approving it. Good day.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. Uh, for the record, Mike Hernandez, on behalf of the Men in the Moment of the Reno Fire Department, have a brief update. Um, the Board of Fire Commissioners acting as the, uh, Truckee Metals Fire Protection District did not meet last week. As such, I don't have, uh, anything to report with respect to actions on their part. Uh, however, I do have some, uh, updates with respect to activities within the city of Reno, and what we are doing to prepare for the July 1, uh, start date. Uh, I'm happy to announce that as of yesterday, Station 9 was manned and is operational, and will be operational for the next six days. This is a short time trial, trial period, uh, ensure that there aren't any, um, any bugs or glitches with the station, uh, the electronics are properly working, and the crews are familiar with the, uh, with their jurisdiction, um, and that'll ensure that, uh, on July 1, that station will be moving, ready, and operational. As we move forward, uh, we will do the same thing with the station on Skyline, as well as the station, uh, number 10 on North Virginia, and ultimately... Station Number 10 on North Virginia, and ultimately, Station in Somerset, Station 19. Work has begun on the temporary facility, what we will soon be calling Station 12 out in the south. Work is, they're aggressively pursuing, making the changes necessary to convert that into some living quarters. We anticipate a move-in date between June 1st and June 15th, likely the first half of June, and we will again move into that to make sure that it's move-in ready by July 1. And we will continue to meet and serve the terms of the inter-local agreement in servicing the south area. We continue to work on modifying our dispatch protocols with respect to removing the Truckee Meadows system from our dispatching system so that as July 1 approaches, we'll be ready to basically flip the switch and start dispatching primarily for the city, the City of Reno. At last week's council session, Councilmember Dorch asked for an assessed value breakdown of the three islands. You have that memo before you. And also, Councilmember Azzi had requested some recommendations with respect to a Plan B and what we can offer the county if they are not able to stand up their system by July 1. Staff is requesting an extension with respect to options to present counsel. There are, since we did accept the SAFER Grant, the terms of the SAFER Grant, we're going to have to carefully consider those as we discuss what type of monetary implications that may have in terms of what we ask the county in the event that they do want us to cover their primary areas. As I understand, the county is moving forward with their Plan B, which would provide primary response into the islands, as we call. And if that's the case, staff will come back with recommendations with respect to how we could make some type of proposal regarding automatic aid. However, at this time, I'm not prepared to make any recommendations on that particular subject, and we will certainly take input from the council with respect to suggestions for alternatives to Plan B. I've asked Maureen McKissick to stay back because she's kind of the architect of the SAFER Grant, and in the event that there are any questions that are relative to that. But that is a summary of what's been going on with respect to the Reno Fire Department and deconsolidation, and I'll take any questions.
You're working on a mutual aid, not an old aid?
Correct. We will be bringing the council. Our mutual aid agreements have been drafted, and they're out to our partners for review. We'd like to bring them in all at one time with respect to our mutual aid agreements with Sparks and Carson and all the regional partners, as well as our state and federal automatic aid, or, correction, our aid agreements with the United States Forestry Service, Nevada Division of Forestry, et cetera. It was more of a technicality. We had to go in and remove the Reno/Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District language out of those contracts and specifically just cite the City of Reno and the City of Reno only. So we'd like to bring as many of those back at the same time because they're basically the same agreement with different agencies. So we, I would anticipate probably by mid-month next month, we'll have all of those back.
Under mutual aid, do we get compensation for those things?
Under the mutual aid agreement, if we exceed 12 hours, yes, we do. And typically, when we do hit that 12-hour benchmark, the incident commanders either release our assets, you know, right before, or they go into a cost-sharing mode where they, we would actually bill them for our time after 12 hours. And typically, those are the large wildfire incidents where we were out there for 12 to 24 to 36 hours. I can't think of a time where we extended mutual aid to Carson or Sparks that exceeded more than six hours. Typically, they have a large event, their crews get on top of it, and they release our crews within four to six hours.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Azzi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. And I don't mind, because we have the SAFER Grants, to look into our Plan B with them. But I would like to have some recommendation in June. I think it's important that the City of Reno has a plan in place that we offer to the county and that we have voted on it. So if something does happen in July, they can't go tell the public, "Well, we have to have the City of Reno do something," where all it would take would be them to make a motion and to accept something that we've put out there. Because if something does happen and something wants to change, you know how we have to schedule meetings and all that? It could take two or three weeks. If we have an offer out there that says, "All you guys have to do is have a meeting and accept it, and it's done," I think that's important for us, and we've been very upfront, I think, with the public in telling them what's going to happen and how it's going to happen. I think this is the last step. I mean, hopefully, they won't ever have to do it, that everything will work fine with the county, and they'll do their, stand their system up. I think they still are having trouble with their dispatch. I think they're working on two or three other things, but I think we've been very open in the past about extending all of the branches and doing what we can do and making sure that it's in place for them. And we're getting down to the wire now, and I hate, at the last minute, to then get tied up in, he said, she said, at the end of the day, in July or August if something happens. If we have a plan in place that the council's already voted on, all they have to do is vote on it and accept it.
Mr. Azzi.
Are you talking about primary aid?
Anything. It could be dispatch, it could be primary aid, it could be anything, but now it has to fold into how it would affect our SAFER Grants. So I understand all that, and I've had some conversations with the chief about how we could do that, some other ways. Some of it might involve true-ups, it might be as simple as, you know, "You guys have to fix the true-ups that you guys are still fighting us on about how much they owe us for two years ago."
Plus, there would be restrictions, too, on, under what circumstances we would provide it. So, for example, I think we wouldn't be going to Gerlach, wouldn't be going out to these rural areas. It'd be basically the immediate areas, like the islands, for example.
Councilmember Hashiff, you're correct. When we do, typically, as we enter into an automatic aid agreement, as an example, what we had with Sparks, we would sit with our command staff and specifically delineate, "This is an area that we are going to cover for you." For example, their Sur treatment plant, which is on this side of the I-80, and our unit is specifically closer. We specifically designate areas that we will provide automatic aid to. We don't go into their northeastern quadrant of their district unless specifically asked with respect to automatic aid. It's a very, very limited portion. It's just, it's kind of in the Whittaker area, right in the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast corner of our city. So as we would enter into those type of agreements, should we enter into those type of agreements with Truckee Meadows/Sierra Fire Protection District, we would sit down and say, "These are the specific areas where we will provide automatic aid and no further."
And anything else presumably staff could think of? I mean, Dave's right, they would have to, they have to take care of the true-ups. We shouldn't be arguing about what's owed to the City of Reno, those restrictions that you're talking about, potentially dispatch. Maybe staff could develop a laundry list that makes sense.
Certainly.
And then that way, like you say, Dave, we'd offer it to the county and say, "Under these circumstances, we'd be able to provide primary aid to these restricted areas."
Correct.
And one thing, and this can be down the road, but something we need to look at is, in the North Valley, up north, we annexed some areas because some developers were going to do some things up there. They've never come forward or done them, and maybe we should look into, Mr. Manager, de-annex in that area and turn it in back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And in regards to the aid agreements like Pierre and Dave were talking about, I thought we'd given you direction to try to work through those, because I know you had some concerns about command staffing and how that would impact us and some other issues, and really, I don't think you've gotten your answers as to what that's going to look like. And I think, I think that was the bigger concern, was that the chief had some concerns, and we said, "We definitely have to address the concerns that you have." But the direction, I think, was to go see if we can work through some of that stuff and put something together that you're comfortable with that you could bring back to us. I thought that was the last direction we gave.
Correct. And at this point, we've received some limited responses from the county. I still have concerns how they're going to manage their system with one battalion chief. We've had some dialogue, and we've exchanged some emails, but we really have not sat down and had a good heart-to-heart, face-to-face, on how we are realistically going to deliver service, how they are going to realistically deliver service for multi-events and those types of things. So those are ongoing, sir.
So I think once we get those worked out, then we can have something in front of us that we can approve. But I just don't think we've got anything that, certainly nothing that the chief's comfortable with.
Dwight, I think you're absolutely correct. And for me, it's the time for staff-to-staff negotiations. It's pretty much over. So it wouldn't be having the chief go negotiate with them how it would be. It would be the chief telling us, "Here's the conditions of which I can do that."
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. And just say, "This is how we can do it," and we'll say, "This is how, we've been trying to negotiate and trying to negotiate to come up with an equitable solution, and we just hit a brick wall on the other side." And we're just dealing with if they, if something happens and they can't do something, under what conditions. So I agree with you, the chief should just come back and say, "Here's the conditions I need to provide automatic aid in those areas or to provide dispatch for this." And not, I'm not saying go negotiate with the county on what it would be, it's just, this is what we would require as a city.
Understand.
And I think the other thing for the public to know, I don't remember if it was said this, but the areas they want us to cover, they collect $2.7 million a year from those three areas, and they turned down us providing aid to those for $1.2 million a year.
Well, I don't think we ever offered $1.2.
No. I mean, I did, I did, but they, but they even rejected that. So they still insist that we provide free coverage to these areas that they collect $2.7 million for.
You know, I think that, rightly put, it's a game plan, is what you're really asking for. And then it also eliminates the credibility gap should something happen in July and August. So I think we should move forward in the direction that Councilman Azzi's talking about.
I'll move forward, I'll move forward with that plan, sir.
Because we, main thing we've been trying to do, not arguing with the county, is trying to set up something and get some information, and we're not getting that. And so we've got to furnish it back to them and say, "Here's what we can do." And if they don't want it, then they've got, they've got the right to set up theirs, and I hope they do. I hope they have more than one truck they can send to a fire. I hope they have enough backup material.
Well, I don't want to belabor this, Mr. Mayor, but last weekend, there were two fires in the north, one in Cold Springs and one...
In the stead area.
In the stead area. There's no, they're both in Truckee Meadows areas. After July 1, I don't believe there's any possible way that they could provide services to these, because there was two at one time. They have one battalion chief to handle this. So I believe it is going to fall apart on there.
Well, I don't know. It's up to them, and they need to make a decision and see which way we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Well, this council's moved today. We can't start the 3:30 meeting.
You got those other two that you waited on, though, Bob?
The ones you were waiting for.
Oh, there she is.
You got I-3 and J-9?
I-3 and J-9. You're right.
Mr. Mayor, do you have an order in which you'd like to take those items in preference? Okay, then I think I'll take them in order of how they were listed on the agenda. For the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager, my thanks to the council for waiting, and my apologies to you for the delay, and to those members of the public who are here. I'm not so good at this two places at one time thing yet, but my, my thank you for your consideration. Item I-3, as the council may recall, is a continuation of an ordinance introduction that was before you at your last meeting. It relates to special events, and I will say that staff did go back and try to make amendments to the ordinance being introduced today to address some of the concerns, to remove the items that were of concern to members of the public who spoke at your last meeting. As will often happen when you engage a number of interested parties, you will find out things after the fact that you weren't aware of initially as being concerned. So you may hear today that we didn't get all of the things out that the interested parties have concerns about, and so staff is absolutely willing to have you either remove those items today or, if necessary, continue this item one more time. It was certainly our intent to get some of the pieces through that didn't affect the issue of pub crawls at hand, passed as quickly as possible so that they would be in place for the upcoming special event season. But I think the important thing here is to do it right, not to do it quickly. And so with that, with the council's approval, I would turn the floor over to Ms. Schroeder to talk about the process that we went through to get to the draft that's before you today and let you know what we've engaged in thus far in the process of speaking with those interested parties on the pub crawl issue.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. What we did after the April 25 council meeting was, we received council direction to pull out Sections 010, specifically to the clarification that we had put in when it related to the progressive alcohol events or the crawls. And we also pulled out Section 513077, which was the limitation on length of special events and the number of special events. So we did pull those out, and council also directed us to come back with a timeline of how we were going to work with the stakeholders to receive their public input and take that into consideration when we rewrite, or reworded how we would restructure the ordinance. And so we did set up three meetings. The first one was yesterday. We had nine stakeholders attend. And the next meeting will be on May 16 at 6:00 p.m. And the final meeting, which we hope would be a wrap-up meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page, will be on May 22 at 9:30 a.m. with the intent of coming back to council with all of those changes at the June 13 meeting for that first hearing. And so where we're at today with the staff report that you have is still, is the changes that we presented a couple weeks ago, minus the stuff that you had directed us to go back and work with the stakeholders on. Just keep in mind that the changes that we have brought forward today are those pro-business changes in which we are easing those restrictions for deadlines and changing the fines of the structure, so...
And this is just the first reading?
Correct. It's still the first reading.
So this wouldn't affect the crawls and all that, what we proposed today? That's still going to come back later?
It still comes back later, but as we had stated at the first meeting, or first reading at the last council meeting, the current definition of a special event does include crawls.
Okay. Let me get to the public comment, and I think they all understand. Rebecca Brooks, thank you for waiting. Sorry. Is Ed still here? Yeah, he's...
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Brooks. I work with the Santa Pub Crawl. And, well, it sounds like it's not going to be finalized now, so I'm glad that this goes back to be considered with other input. But a lot of concerns have been mentioned with the city finances as far as budget finances, and that's part of the concern with the crawls, too. We don't really know what to expect with police. The statistics that were thrown around have kind of been thrown around helter-skelter. We originally, pre-event last year, had 10 police that we were going to pay for. After the After-Arch report, we still thought they were paying for 10 police. It ended up, we finally paid for nine police, although we originally billed for 30 police, and that's a whole nother story, but that was dropped down to nine police. And last meeting, it was said that we paid for eight police. Well, it's eight officers plus one sergeant, so splitting hairs, I suppose it is eight. Right now, we have a special event cost estimate for this year for 27 police. Last event, or last meeting, it was said that it was going to be 16 police. We don't know if those 27 police, it's one sergeant and six officers are to be held over, are actually in the $10,000 price or if it's something else. The Santa Crawl right now, the special event is permit, is only for two hours under the arch, but Matt has always thought that we need more police coverage, so we pay for six hours of the police. The police charge us at time and a half. I'm assuming that's some sort of agreement with the city. But if there's some way that these events can be scheduled into the normal workflow, that would help substantially. In addition, there are never just the special events police. There are always 16 police that are regularly scheduled on a Saturday. Plus, there are also six to 12, I couldn't figure out which, it's up to the chief's discretion is my understanding, DET police, which are downtown enforcement team. So there are always 28 police officers plus the ones that we pay for. And I'm nervous, so I'm sorry, I sound like I'm shaking. But for this year's event, that would be 22 standard police plus the 27, so we would have 49 police at the downtown event. That seems a little excessive. The onsite calls for the 2011 was 89 incidents. There was a DUI sting that was reported in the Reno Gazette Journal that no Santas were arrested. If we take out those, plus the times that the officers are actually put on duty, taken off duty, and given their assignments, we're down to 28 calls. We had 30 officers on duty at any time, and yet we only had 28 onsite calls for an eight-hour period, or seven, I'm sorry, I don't recall. We don't have the statistics that were provided at the staff report. We've requested them, but they have not been provided yet. We are told we will get them next week. These would bring down the statistics because we don't even know what you're looking at to say what we're looking at. The other issues are, not all of these are police calls. There's 14% that were a hang-up call from a 911 business. However, we have REMZA. The REMZA should not be included in these, and really, the city council should request better reports. better reports. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for sticking around. Ed Atkins.
Hi, thanks for putting up with me again. Again, Ed Atkins, I do the zombie crawl, vampire crawl, and superhero crawl. Yes, serious business guy. I'd like to reiterate what I'd said before, that matrix slash flowchart idea that we, that was proposed by Jamie. And also the, that, that account that was brought up, I'd, I'd love to see those things moved ahead with. I'd like to read a letter from Mike Malady. He runs the Reno Beer Crawl. He also, he's done a great deal for Reno, especially local events over the years. He's the one who encouraged me to get into events and do the crawls that I do, and he helped nurture them and get them where they are, so I wouldn't be here without him. And he asked me to read him, read this for you. Mayor and councilpersons, at the council meeting on April 25th, 2012, councilpersons, and I'm so sorry if I mangled these, Zadra, Iasi, Dorch, and Haschif, asked thoughtful questions exposing massive problems with the proposed changes to Title 513, special events suggested by the city manager's office. At the conclusion of the questioning, Councilman Haschif asked the city, the Reno City Manager's Office to bifurcate the pro-business, non-controversial portions of the proposed changes to Title 513, submit those separately for vote today, May 9th, 2012, and discuss the changes that materially, materially affected organizers of pub crawl events with the stakeholders over the next several weeks and try to reach common ground. The changes being suggested today by the Reno City Manager's Office completely disregard Councilman Haschif's request to bring forward only pro-business language and expose what appears to be an abject lack of sincerity in the sincerity the city manager's office in dealing with the stakeholders bilaterally and in good faith. I direct your attention specifically, and not all-inclusive, of what you were asked for to vote, what you were asked to vote on today in item I-3 to the following. Number one, staff is asking you to approve changes to Section 5 dot 13 dot 010 that give the city the right and perhaps obligation to require permitting for any assembly of 75 people that even incidentally uses the sidewalk or public space. And two, staff is asking you to approve changes to Section 5 dot 13 dot 030 that assert criminal penalties for failure to file for a permit on the new highly controversial and intellectually, okay, now these are his words, intellectually bankrupt expanded definition in one. With these two changes and the general authorization provision of Section 5 point 13 point 085, city council would be granting the city's manager's office all the tools they need to do what they want at the objection of many in Reno, unilaterally, even without further changes to the municipal code. If the city council is sincerely interested in involving the stakeholders in this process, you will reject the changed, the changes proposed today. Sincerely, Mike Malady, Jr.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, just have one more second. Is it?
Let me ask you a question. You have anything else to say?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, that was Mike's letter, and I wanted to make sure that everybody's voices got heard, and he couldn't be here today. I would like to, if possible, get on the agenda for the next city council meeting to present about the crawls, just because I think that more understanding of what we go through as event promoters would, would definitely help some of this. And also, too, I think a little history about how they started and what good they do in Reno would probably be good for everyone to hear.
Okay, we'll see if we can arrange that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the public comment cards I had. Anyone else have a statement about this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the table. Comments, questions? Pierre?
Yeah, for staff on, on Mike, because I got his email, the one that was just read into the record, does staff have any, have you seen that, Cadence? Do staff have any comments?
Councilman, I had not seen that letter or email. I did personally participate in a lengthy telephone call, a joint call between myself, Mr. Malady, and Mr. Goddard last week to try and, and hear out the issues for myself so that, that I had a better understanding. And they did raise some, some valid points throughout the course of our conversation. As I indicated, you know, we had not been aware that, that they were concerned about those particular parts that have been brought up. And so certainly, staff is more than willing to go back and continue to work with them. We can pull those items out today. As Ms. Schroeder indicated, we do have a relatively short timeline that we were hoping to conduct the rest of this process in, with bringing back a first reading, a new first reading of the additional items that we're still working on, on the 13th, and then ideally for, for adoption at your last meeting in June. And so, again, we, you know, we had hoped to get some of these things implemented sooner than, rather than later. But if the best course of action, in the opinion of the council at this point, is to refer the whole matter and bring it all back together at once, staff is certainly open to that.
Because really, the timeline that you've set is 5:16 at 6:00 PM is going to be another stakeholder meeting, then you're going to have another one at 9:30 AM on the 22nd, and then we actually meet on the 23rd. So.
Yes, Councilman, I, I am afraid, much as staff tries to do things quickly, and you heard me say last time, we can do that, a one-day turnaround to get something back to you is probably too short. And so our intent had been to conduct that final meeting on, it's either the 22nd or the 23rd, I'm not remembering off the top of my head right now, and to bring you back the, hopefully, a consensus version of this ordinance at your first meeting in June, and then final adoption of that at your second meeting in June.
I guess I'm trying to get the, the timeline straight, because ultimately, we could move forward, you could lift out the offending, you could continue to meet with the stakeholders, and then whatever amendments you would bring, you would bring back for that. Is the intent to have the second reading on the 23rd?
The second reading of what's before you today?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So if we made substantial changes, we just have to, we start the first reading all over again?
Correct. So we could, you know, if, if the, if those particular sections of the ordinance that were identified in Mr. Malady's letter, if you'd rather pull those out and then refer what's before you today for adoption on the 23rd without those, we could incorporate that into the work that we're doing that we're going to bring back on the 13th. And I just don't want, I don't, I'm not certain, and I don't want to represent that those items that were addressed by Mr. Malady are the only concerns that have been brought up by, by the other stakeholders. There, there may be other things, so I don't want to, you know, I'm not aware of them, but I don't want to represent that those were the only items in, in this draft that were of concern. I, I didn't hear them today, but I know that I did, I haven't been present for the whole meeting.
At least from my perspective, I'd like to just get it right, you know, where stakeholders have had their input, and you bring back to us a final product. But I guess the other alternative is, is we move forward, take out that offending language, start the first reading, and then come back to us on the 23rd with hopefully the final comments from the stakeholders.
I, I'm not sure I'm understanding you correctly, Councilman.
If we go by what staff's recommending, is we approve this one today for the first reading and the second reading on the 23rd? Then we get the comments from the stakeholders while they're having these meetings, and they come back to us to change the ordinance again, and we have two readings?
Right, but I, I, I think we're on the same page, because if we meet on the 23rd, you'd already have two meetings with the stakeholders. So you could at least, by the 16th, that would give you enough time to make adjustments to the second reading, or not?
I, I don't think so, Councilman, and I think that the changes that are going to come back from that working group will be substantive enough that it would require a new first reading. And so if there is a desire by the council, with the exception of those items that were identified by the prior public speaker, to, to move those forward, to have those, a second reading and adoption potentially on the 23rd, and to have those items put into place right away so that anybody submitting their permit the following week would be subject to the 90-day application deadline rather than the 120-day. I mean, essentially, we're going to have about a month's timeline between what's, what, whatever you refer today for adoption on the 23rd and, and what I expect to come out of the working group. But I do expect those to be substantive changes that would, that, that would.
Yeah, so for those changes, we'd start the first reading anyway.
On the, on the 13th, correct.
Yeah, and I think going forward, I'm sorry, Sharon.
Cadence, I was, thank you. I was just going to ask, from your preference, from the administrative side and the staff demand, would you prefer that we do kind of bifurcate and take out those issues and approve the rest, or would it be cleaner to have it all in one?
Yes and yes. And I'm not trying to be difficult, Councilwoman. I, I do think that there, that there are advantages to, to adopting those, what I would characterize as non-controversial items. I do think that there is, are benefits in these changes that we're, that are recommended here, that, that event organizers would reap the benefit of right away, and I think they would be appreciative of that. So, so I, I do want to move those forward, but I also think.
Let me jump in here and move this along a little further. I think if we bifurcate it, if we postpone, like Mr. Malady is commenting about 75 people being a special event, right now it's 50. So by bifurcating, it actually makes it easier on promoter, even if we change it later. Right now, it, it would make that increase by 50% right now if we keep the current language. So this is what we said, a more business-friendly, whether it's perfect, I don't, obviously it isn't, but it goes clear to what, like, Mr. Malady is, is concerned about. I think it still gets us closer to what he wants rather than further away. And there are some things, the only one that I would say is maybe we take out that 085, which just lets the city manager make up other rules as he wants to later on. That could wait for two months and come back with the bigger one to see if we really still want to keep that.
Councilman Iasi, if I may, and I certainly don't want to speak for Mr. Malady, I believe his concern is not just the 75, it's that we've inserted the word side, the, the state, the word sidewalk into the ordinance. I, I think that's more his concern. Because right now, the way that it reads is, is on any street, does not have the language sidewalk, park, or other public property, and, and I do think that that is germane to his concern.
Okay, so if we struck sidewalk out, we could bring that. Yes, Craig?
Thank you, Craig Skoff, from the city attorney's office. On that sidewalk issue, it's important to note that there's a section that makes exceptions to what is a special event or covered by the special event ordinance. It's in 5 point 13 point 040, and that specifically exempts, if you look at 513040A3, it exempts picketing, assembling, and marching on sidewalks, provided that the normal traffic and pedestrian laws are obeyed. So that does, that we, that does leave sidewalks open for your normal, if you will, First Amendment uses of those. And if they're using it for a sidewalk for a commercial purpose, we would still want to have a permitting process in any event with 75 people involved.
But if we took that out now, if that's the offending portion is the sidewalks, we can bring that part back. I mean, if, that would be two months later. So if we took that out, the sidewalk portion that Mr. Malady is concerned about, and the 085, we can move forward on the rest of this, or not, or bring it all back at once. Sir?
If I may, sir, Alex Willie, Code Enforcement Manager, for the record. I can address all three items that he identified in the, in the letter, specifically with the, with regards to the special events. Like you stated before, sir, you are correct, this actually increases it from 50 to 75. With regards to the sidewalk, if you look at number four, which we are striking out, which we are removing, under that special events definition, number four, it specifically references sidewalks. So even if you didn't approve it today with that, or you took that portion out, it would still be in there with regards to sidewalks.
Okay, anything else?
And then, and then the second item, if I may, sir, on 5 point 13 point 030, with reference to making it unlawful, if you'll notice, the wording that is stricken out also provides for the ability for it to be unlawful the way it reads right now, today.
Correct.
And then the last item, which he referred to with, with regards to the city manager, I believe it's 0 point 085?
Correct.
And you'll notice that the only addition in there, the entire paragraph remains the same. The only addition in there is a statement that states, "Such rules and regulations shall be filed with and available to the public from the city clerk." So that's the only difference in there. And that doesn't have any impact on, on the powers or the authority of the city manager.
And I agree with you, but we're changing this ordinance, so I think it's up to council maybe to think about this more, whether we want to give us a city manager that power to make changes without coming to council. It does sort of leave it open-ended in an ordinance that we put in that city manager can just decide what to have. Because I, I know that Andrew is really tough on things, but.
And, and that's what exists right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So what we would like to do?
Well, originally, I thought it made sense just to defer it and then bring it back as a package, and then we would deal with it. But having heard Cad, Cadence basically saying that, hey, there are things that are beneficial in the ordinance, which is correct, let's pass that today, and then have them meet with the stakeholders and then bring back the changes.
Okay, so we want to strike out, well, if we had a motion, we'd strike out 5 point 13 085 for now? And on 5 point 13 010, we would take out the word sidewalk? Is that what I'm hearing from everyone?
I mean, I think according to Alex, though, even if you take it out, it doesn't change anything, correct?
Unless you change the other section.
If I may, I think we need to get a little more technical than that. I think you would, you would be directing staff to delete the word sidewalk and perhaps, or other public property, I don't know if you want to leave the word park in, under the definition of special event, but retain the strike-through of number four, which is the prior language.
Let's do this, Cadence. This is only the first reading. We all agree on taking out the 513085 for now. Why don't you bring back to us at the second reading what, what parts we have to strike out of the sidewalk? Because that wouldn't be a substantive change, I wouldn't think, where we could take that out in the second reading?
Mm-hmm.
We wouldn't have to design it right here in case we missed something?
Okay.
Would that work?
Certainly.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, sir, miss.
Mr. Mayor, I need to read this.
Okay.
This is bill number 6794, ordinance to amend Title 5, Chapter 5.13 of the Reno Municipal Code by adding Section 5.13.091, denial of permit issuance, and by adding and deleting certain wording to Sections 5.13.010 definitions, 5.13.020 purpose, 5.13.030 permit required, 5.13.040 exceptions to permit requirement, 5.13.050 permit fees, 5.13.060 when application complete, 5.13.085 rules authorization, 5.13.090 application for permit, 5.13.092 event reviews and advanced denials, 5.13.100 event alcohol permit, 5.13.110 form and condition of permit, 5.13.120 issuance, excuse me, insurance and indemnification, 5.13.130 business hours or regularly conducted businesses during events, 5.13.140 impacted neighborhood notification, 5.13.150 authorized event vendors, 5.13.180 unlawful to interfere with event, 5.13.200 suspension or revocation of permit, and 5.13.210 cost recovery for events, and 5.13.220 appeal. And I have left in the 5.13.050, and you can take that out when you make your motion.
Okay, you mean the 5.13085? Okay. So we had a motion to, to refer this?
Correct.
With the exception of 5.13085?
Correct. That's, that's the change, right? Yep, okay, yep.
I think you add that missing, together with, together with other matters, property relating thereto should be included in the language. That's missing from the.
Okay.
Ending. That should be included as part of the motion as well, and then can be added for the second reading.
Okay, I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd make that change, yes.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. What's the other we had for you, Cadence? There was another one?
The Charter Review Committee.
Oh, Charter Review Committee.
Can we do that later, though, and get the outskirts done?
Yeah, we can.
There might be some discussion.
Okay.
We've got all these super.
I agree. Okay, let's move to J-5.
Good afternoon, for the record, I'm Christine Faye, Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager. We have some members of the commission with you today, and I'm going to turn this over to Nettie Olivario, Chair of the Commission, to give you a very brief presentation and see if, very brief, and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi, good afternoon. It's such a pleasure to be before you, especially on this august situation of having our three-year-in-the-work plan now before you, the cultural master plan revision. And, you know, honestly, elephants give birth faster than this, so we're really glad to have it before you. I have some thank yous to offer. We have five of our nine commissioners with us today. Arts and Culture Commission has been working very hard on this throughout the length of time that we've been considering this. And so if our commissioners could stand up, please, and be acknowledged, and, yep, there you are, thank you. Especially, we have Art Domagala and Jim Kidder, who have worked tirelessly on this, Jim as editor, and Art to make it pretty. He formatted and added some of his own photography in here and made it something that's pleasurable to read as well as easy to access when you're looking for something specific. Our intent is for this to be able to go up onto the web after approval. We don't want this to be a document that ends up on the shelf somewhere. Additional folks that have contributed mightily to this are our former commissioners, Amanda Rookie and John Shelton, who worked for the full three years on this, trying to make it become the entity that it is. So huge kudos to them. And finally, our arts and culture staff. Christine and the staff at McKinley has just been so supportive, we could not have done this without them, so we thank them. We thank all of you as our council for continuing to make arts and culture a priority for our city. We cannot move forward with a priority without a plan, and this is our 10-year plan to make it happen. So if you have any questions, I'm your lady.
Any questions? I have a couple, and thank you for all the hard work that's gone into this. It's obviously been very, very time-consuming, and I appreciate what's happened. And I just have a couple of questions about what's going on in here. Section 2.2 and 4.5, they sort of talk about the same thing, an arts incubator and create an arts center.
Uh-huh.
Do we consider places like the Holland Project and the art space that's going on on Dickerson Road to be doing those things? I mean, I thought that the Holland Project actually does those.
The Holland Project does incubate in the sense of a youth organization. We are hoping to have, and we've actually offered arts and culture grants in the past for new and evolving organizations that perhaps are just applying now for their 501(c)(3) and are umbrellaed by others. And so in the incubation process, that would be where they would learn really how to create an organization, how to put together a working board, how to just get their feet under them to move out. And actually, McKinley Center right now has an incubation area in that. We've not been so successful in getting our incubated creatures to move out. They love it there and they stay.
Well, I guess that's sort of my, I think we have those things, but this plan says to create them-
Mm-hmm.
Instead of support the existing one.
Well, and we intend to support the existing, but we need more, and we'll need more in the future.
But if someone's reading this, they're assuming we don't do any of these now, in my opinion. And then on the facilities, parking, and fees, you talk about specific ones to do, like the Masonic Building.
Mm-hmm.
What if the Masons don't want to do it? So, but that's in our plan that we do that.
Yeah.
I think the wording should be changed a little bit to support things like the Masonic Building, because in 10 years from now, do we meet the goal of this mission? No, we didn't do the Masonic Building. Why? They didn't want us to. You know, there could be, so, and it doesn't have the conversation about the Lear Theater in here and other evolving things.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that wording could be a little softer about discuss options for reworking other existing buildings, like the Laxalp Theater and that. And I like having this discussion about how much it costs in there.
Yeah.
But by having it specifically in a plan, if it doesn't get done, it's seen as a failure later. And it might not get done because of things outside of our control or your control from the arts organizations. And I didn't see anything on facilities about what the city of Reno should do with our existing facilities. No talk about fees structure, lowering the fees, or what we should do to encourage the use of our existing facilities, like Wingfield Park. I mean, we don't do anything to promote them, we just say, here they are. And we don't go promote those. I don't think we've included in this, I think the Black Rock Arts Foundation should be included, and some of the Burning Man groups that are bringing huge chunks to arts and culture here in Reno. And I think the last chunk I've got is, and this is sort of odd, but it seems like it's done a lot to say that we haven't done anything. It gives all the credit to other groups for the Riverside Artist Loss. It doesn't mention at all what the city of Reno has done toward the Riverside Artist Loss. It says here that there's been considerable cuts in arts and culture, and I don't believe that's true. I think that this should be reworded a little bit to say that we have been progressing and we have been doing things, instead of we have to do these things, assuming, if you gave this to someone on the street, they'll assume that none of this is happening. And I believe a lot of this stuff that's in this plan is happening right now. I really feel that way.
Good comments, thank you.
Those are my comments. Ms. Rethan?
Yeah, I think, just to comment in what wasn't in here, but I just want to thank Councilman Iasi. I think he's been a strong, strong proponent of the arts. I mean, if one person on this council has fought for funding and dedication towards the art groups, it's Councilman Iasi. He's brought it forward, been supportive of the master plan. So I would agree with some of the things you're saying, Dave, as far as, I think that document's very good. I think making it more positive towards what, how the city has progressed as far as arts and culture. But I think that our support of Art Town and the different events and how far the city's come has been tremendous success.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
And the last one I had is one of your things was on civic aesthetics. By modifying the planning of your bylaws to require one position, we've tried that before, and you don't always have a licensed architect. So that should be softened to be, you hope that someone, I think there's required to be an architect on the Arts and Culture Commission.
There is.
And there's times where we couldn't find someone.
You're correct.
So that position stays open.
Mm-hmm.
So instead of requiring the position to be filled, maybe a recommendation that one position be filled by an architect. Because if we change the bylaws, you can't have the planning commission with one position open because you can't have someone. Okay.
So how do we go about making these changes, then?
We could just make some minor modification, have them bring it back to us in a month, and we spend a long time coming, and it's the first time the council's seen it. So maybe we could just bring it back and make some of those changes within a month.
Yeah, and I also want to say it's a great job. Obviously, we didn't have the funds to get a consultant, so a lot of the laboring work was done by the commission and all the hard work, so that certainly is very appreciative.
Well, Councilman Heskey, there were actually almost 100 people involved in this, because it was not only the commission, but we created subcommittees for each of the seven interest areas, and then they in turn had their own little committee. So, yeah, a lot of input into this. Thank you for the compliment.
Sure.
Having the 100 people involved, I think really does speak well to the arts community and the commitment and support that our community has to it.
Yeah.
So I would echo the great appreciation and kudos to both the current as well as former members, and to you as well, Councilman Iasi. Good job.
So can we have a motion to bring this back in a month? And the Arts and Culture Commission meets tomorrow, I believe, and I can propose some of these to them tomorrow also as liaison?
I make a motion, we bring it back in a month.
You like that, make a motion.
I don't get to do it very often, so I want to have a little fun today.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, we're on to 4 o'clock time cert, Mr. Mayor. That's 3:53, we can do what? Oh, 3:45.
It's kind of the same thing, because since the kids were down here, we had a 4 o'clock scheduled, so I guess for attorneys, can we, we can't hear the other one beforehand, but we could go the surplus items, right?
Yes, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. If you have a designated time cert, and you can't hear it before that time.
J.
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 For the record, Jeff Mann, Parks Manager. Since we submitted the staff report, I've had, I've received two email bids, which I'd like to read into the record. One is from Mr. Roger Norman. He is bidding a lump sum of $6,100 for the first and third base bleachers, the field lights, all the remaining blue seats not already included in previous bids, the awning structure over the third base bleachers, the chalk liner, the portable stage, and chain link fencing. And again, that was $6,100. If council accepts his bid, that would mean rejecting bid items number 23, 24, and 25 on the bid tab for a net increase of $4,738.89. Also received a email bid from Steve Park of Park House and Building Movers. He was a prior bidder. He also submitted a bid for the three upright posts on the scoreboard, not the scoreboard itself, just the uprights, for $50 plus the salvage value of one of the three poles, which he will donate back to the city. I have no other bids at this time, unless there are any here from the audience or the public.
Did Roger's bid include the light post or anything?
No, sir, it did not. Yes, sir, it did include the field light poles. $6,100 included the field lights.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. It might be good at this time to announce if there is anyone in the public and they wish to bid that they could come up to the podium and provide an oral bid.
Anybody in the audience wish to come up and bid? Did you raise your hand, young man? Okay, I just was checking it out to make sure.
And Mr. Mayor, with that, we should close the public auction, and then you can discuss and choose which items you'd like to award.
We'll close the public auction this time, bring it back to the table for discussion.
Jeff, is there any concern, or is there representation in that bid that they're working with, a salvage company, and will take all risks and have the equipment in order to be able to remove all of that equipment and fixtures from the stadium?
Yes, ma'am, that was part of the bid document. Every bidder assumes all risks of removing whatever items that they are awarded and must apply for any permits necessary to either remove or transport the items that they bid on.
And the demolition bid that we have for the entire site, not just the ball field, we did have, this is just for the record, we did have conversation-
He's here, Sharon. I was going to call him up. Ken's here.
Oh, there you are. Good, good, good. Yeah. You should be here to recognize that we did give you every opportunity to express that there was some value that could be had for you if you had the opportunity to take these out and resell or reuse. That we gave you that opportunity, and you said, no, that's okay with me?
Julie Conway, for the record, if I may, to respond to your question, Councilor Zadra, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director. You're referring to Ken Mercurio, who is the principal owner of the Diversified Demolition Company. He is in the office, he is in the audience and is here to answer any questions. I have had a conversation with him about the lights, the light poles, but this is the individual you're referring to.
Would you come up, please? Huge, huge appreciation. Yeah, really.
Thank you.
So this would have no impact on the bid that you've presented to you personally? You're not seeing this as being any kind of takings from what you intended to potentially have as a limited revenue source within your bid?
No, not really. We have the expense of taking them down. There is some salvage offset involved. My concern was having a licensed contractor involved in that process with proper insurance, because those light poles are, it's quite a liability. It's crane work, they've got to be hoisted, there's electrical involved. So there's definitely some coordination that needs to happen to facilitate that happening. I'm sure we could work with somebody. You know, there were talks about possibly incorporating some of the high-mass lighting into the new design, which may save money, significant money on the rebuild. To go buy new lights is quite expensive. I think Minogue just did theirs, and I think, I want to say they were upwards of $20,000 apiece. And the main cost in that is the steel, you know, the high mass itself.
And would you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, I'm Ken Mercurio. I'm the owner of Diversified Demolition Company.
Mr. Mayor, can I just follow up? Ken, I just wanted to follow up with you, because informally, I think we do have these recommendations, and I didn't know if you had a chance to go through them, but we did have some folks, I think, that came through from schools that didn't actually bid, and if they wanted these items, could you work with them directly to dispose of these items? Because I tend to agree, the liability, the ones that we don't award today, I think we got two more. Would you be one to work with those folks, the different schools and Little League or whoever it is?
Absolutely. I think it's one of those items, you know, this has come so fast and furious that, you know, if there was some discussion, excuse me, some discussion and some coordination, you know, with the new design, or potentially another, you know, city park or facility or a school, there's quite a bit of value there that could be saved, you know, in a rebuild or adding that to another facility.
Well, I personally think that these bids are ridiculous. I think that the light poles alone should have brought more money than this. And I think that we should reject, personally reject, all the bids. We want lights on the soccer fields and stuff like this, but we at least got the poles, and we can work with you to move them or store them on site or do something. We got some bleachers, we can rebuild, or we can do something. We can do, for, what is it, $6,000 or something like that?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, the light poles, the rest, though, I think staff was recommending that we get rid of it small, I think, except for the storage shed. I believe the sports folks wanted to be able to use the storage shed to store stuff, but the rest is just small, like little things.
Well, those portable bleachers, all you got to do is put some new wood on the portable bleachers and make them usable again. They're made out of steel. I just, I think it's ridiculous. I think it's a ridiculous number. Mr. Dort?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I don't know, do we have to make a decision on this today? Is this time-sensitive as far as?
Again, Julie Conway, for the record, Parks and Recreation Director. Based on the council's direction to move forward on this and try to get the, and get, not try, but to get the turf in by September, we do need to have a decision so that we can move forward with the demolition part of the contract that we're anticipating to bring back to you on May 23rd. So we're trying to reach the deadline of the September seeding and/or slotting, and so that's why we're on a very set timeline. If council would like to defer the decision today and go back out to bid, or look at having these items, some of these items have already been expressed to be donated to other groups, then what we had anticipated with this is that the groups or the individuals who bid on this would have to remove everything from the site by the end of May, so we would have that portion of the site clear. So if council would like to do something different, we'll take that direction. We would like to have some decision on it so that we can move forward to meet your timeline of September.
Has anyone talked to the county about, I mean, because they're going to need lights for the new ball fields instead at the-
The, you're talking about the North Valley site, and right now, they have, I have talked with Al Rogers, the director, and right now, they do not have any plans at this point to move forward with the Babe Ruth Fields. They're only working on the Spray Park, and until the county commission gives direction to staff to move forward on the ball fields-
So they're not moving on the flat fields, they're not moving forward on anything out there?
They're only moving forward, they're only moving forward on the Spray Park. That's what they're moving forward with at this point. So to answer your question, in the near term, the- So, to answer your question, in the near term, the ball fields out there are not the priority that the county commission has given county staff to move forward on.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the only reason I asked the question was, one, was I wasn't sure if there was a possibility of using them for out there, but I guess that's not an option. And then the other thing was, and Jeff met with me up there, up at the stadium the other day with the university, and the university was showing some interest in possibly the lights and some seating, but I know they're out at, the guys that were up there are out of town until next week, and they weren't able to put together what they could use out of that.
Well, I would, I think we reject all of them and see if there's schools or whatever. Then also look at the design of what we're going to do with the ball fields and things and stuff like this, because maybe we can use them. I mean, it's ridiculous for $4,000 or $6,000 to award these. And I personally would like to tour it next week and look at it and see. I've driven it, drove it with the city manager and everything, and I think these are ridiculous numbers. If we don't do anything but chop it up and sell it for scrap iron.
And I mean, I think a lot of it, I think, I mean, at least for the, for the other entities, I think Feather River is the only other entity on here that...
Well, there was one school over here, I think, Damani or somebody was looking for lights, but I think they backed out.
Well, they determined they couldn't do it, I think, correct, Jeff?
Oh, okay. But we've got our own ball fields to light and other stuff like that, so I would really like to look at this design, go out there and look around and see if we can.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe staff did look at our potential uses. I need to hear that from them, but I believe they did. And what was the bidding process? We didn't, obviously, we can't use an accelerated one, but what was the bidding process? How was the information disseminated for people to be able to respond?
Respond to the request for auction?
Right.
We sent it out through the normal bidding channels that Finance Department uses. We had an extensive email and phone list of people who had contacted us once the publicity for this event took place, so we responded to all of those directly. I emailed the entire, I'm on a, I'm a track official for Northern Nevada, so I emailed the entire track officials' email list, which includes all the Northern Nevada high schools, including as far out as Elko and Fallon. It had extensive publicity in the Reno Gazette Journal and on all three TV stations.
Mr. Mayor, can we move forward and tie this into the next agenda item and go ahead and reject all the bids at this time? Because I think, I agree with you, and I think we should work with the other nonprofits and work with the demolition contractor at the university, whoever needs those. I'd prefer for $5,000 to help other groups that we donate them, but I think Ken is willing to do that, and I think that, I think we should go ahead and make a motion to reject all bids at this point.
I, that's a motion to reject.
Is it open for public comment?
Do you want to turn in a permit slip to talk?
Sure.
Whoever it was that yelled, yeah, you can turn it in over here.
Come and talk first.
Yeah, talk and then you fill it out.
Yeah, you can fill it out after it, I just didn't see where you were.
No problem. For the record, Paul Henrickson, I did place a bid for a couple items on here, a couple of the stadium seats as well as the menu boards. I think by not allowing the public to make these bids or to accept these bids is doing a disgrace for the public. I think everything's been done, as a gentleman who just spoke, and I'm sorry, I forgot his name, but he did say he reached out to everybody possible over the last couple of weeks. It was put out to the general public to make an offer, the people like myself and probably a couple of dozen others, the ones who were included on here, that according to the sheet that I've got in front of me, the recommendation is to reject a few bids but to accept the others. You're looking at a net gain of $6,000. There was another gentleman here who said, if he made another bid for the information or for the items that weren't already on here, that's a net gain of another, I think he said $4,000. So, you're looking at a total of $10,000. I guess my question is, what more are we looking to get out of that? $10,000 isn't enough over the last, whatever it is, month or two months that it's been out there? What more are we looking to get to meet the deadline of the end of May to get the demolition done?
Well, I don't, I didn't hear the other $4,000, where was it?
I didn't either. That was for the lights.
I heard, I heard $6,000 for the total package.
Right, which he mentioned, and again, I forget his name, but he mentioned...
That's total, that takes your bid out and everybody else's.
No, he said it was in addition to what was already out there, so the remainder of the stadium seating.
There was a $6,100 bid from Roger Norman, which supplanted some of the other bids that we'd already received, none submitted by Mr. Henricks, and the net value on that was $4,900 and some change.
In addition to what's already out there?
Yes. If we accept all the bids, the maximum value that we would receive is $9,597.82.
And what did Mr. Norman bid on his $6,000 bid?
The light poles, the first and third base bleachers, the awning over the third base bleachers, chalk liner, the portable stage extensions, and chain link fencing.
And we won't, we don't have any use for the lights now or in the future?
We don't anticipate any, and one of the reasons is, we can't service them. They're very expensive to operate and maintain because they're higher than we can service with any of our in-house lift trucks.
Okay. And then with respect to this gentleman, the items that he mentioned, what were those items again? Those seem like, those are not controversial items. He could go ahead and bid on those.
Those were the two menu boards, as well as a total of four stadium seats. I guess my question and concern is, you know, again, what are we looking to get out of this if almost $10,000 isn't enough over the last two months that it's been out to public auction? Second, you know, you're looking at a group of people who made these bids, got very excited, person like myself who's not originally from Reno, but has been here for five years, a supporter of the Reno Aces with season tickets for a couple of years, looking to get their hands on a couple of nice pieces of local sports memorabilia that could be a nice keepsake for their family, friends, yard, things like that. And then now we're just going to reject all bids because we don't think that's enough money, and then make a donation where we may get a couple hundred dollars extra out of it. Worst case scenario, this stuff is going to go to demolition and no one's going to get any use out of it.
Well, no, I think what council...
So, your total bid's $132, is that what I'm looking at?
And 36 cents.
And 36 cents. I'm not going to fight you over it.
I appreciate that.
I'll give you the $132, but everything else I think we should reject.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we hear from Ken again, from the demolition side?
Come on up, sir.
Yeah, I think some of these more minor items could probably be worked out. We just have to coordinate it, you know, with schedule and there again, if we've got some, if we've got a kind of a set number of items that we're dealing with, a couple stadium seats, a couple menu boards, we can probably work in coordination with that. I do believe the lighting, bleachers, the things of that nature have significant more value than what's being offered in those. In my salvage experience, which goes back 20 years, there's a lot more value there than what's being offered. On the more minor items, I think that can be dealt with.
Mr. Mayor, this seems to me about timing is on some of the things that he's doing. Let's say on the next agenda item, we move ahead with everything that we want to do and he goes in there and it'll take a while to the contract, so on some of these other items, it would be the city staff working with people to get them out of there. So, if we had a timeframe, like the red and green storage sheds, you know, if they got out of the way before, if we had a timeframe, they had to get them out of there before he could get there, and I agree with the menu boards, but that would be city staff going there, not him, having to coordinate getting them out of there in a...
Yeah, by the end of the month.
Right, by the end of the month. So, we can move forward on some of these. Some of the stuff that I do think, though, that the city might be able to use, or if in someone's professional opinion who's going to do this, that there might be more value to something than he thinks is being offered, I would certainly take that as something that reduces his costs later on for the bid. So, it might actually provide more to the city than getting into that. So, maybe instead of rejecting the bids, we could, we could work with him and have it on the next agenda to see which one, I mean, next week's agenda. We still could offer some of these, but work with, with this contract, see what he thinks that he would keep. I mean, it'd be an hour conversation and not, like, people like Mr. Henricks, I agree with him, it's not a harm to do that. But some of the things I think that we should, I think there's some things we should keep, and we should talk about that, so.
Parks Department, those light poles and we want to light those fields someday, you don't think those poles are good enough to light the fields with?
Well, how, we've been doing it for 40 years.
Yeah.
They hire, they hire a company to come in that's got a longer bucket.
Correct.
But if they do what they're going to do, they may want to do that. I mean, with the new fields and stuff.
Sir, we have not discussed lighting the soccer fields. That's not in the plan that's going to be presented. If that's going, if that's going to be an option, then we would certainly look at keeping those posts.
Why wouldn't it be an option?
From a maintenance perspective, every soccer field we light, sir, from a maintenance perspective, every soccer field we light increases the use on those fields 20 to 30% and we're incapable of maintaining the fields given the current use. So, that's why we don't recommend lighting soccer fields. And the remaining eight poles, sir?
Yeah, they get used more.
Does it get used more?
They get used more.
Well, Richard's here, let's ask him, Mr. Mayor, because I think that was the vision. Eventually, I think they'd like to get them lit.
Good afternoon, Richard J., Great Basin Youth Soccer League. The lighting, we only have one area, two areas that have lighting right now on it. That would be Miraloma and then Golden Eagle, Golden Eagle's artificial turf. But our plan for the lighting out at Moana is, we'd like to pre-wire and write a grant from US Youth Soccer for their lighting program. It's about $150,000 to put poles out there, but the new poles that are being used now are much shorter, much more energy efficient, and just make a lot more use. We can light that entire field with just six poles. They just did a field down in Davis, very much like these two fields that go out here with six poles to light up the whole thing, and it was about $150,000. Yes, lighting will increase the number of games, but given the number, you know, we just finished our numbers today, we're pushing 8,000 registrations a year now. We've got, you know, 40 games just this weekend alone, so, you know, lighting would help us, and yes, it's going to put more wear and tear on the fields, but that means we just have to put more money to keep them and maintain them. We've got budget for that, so, you know, partner up with us and let's do it. Thank you.
Because you could put those economical lights on these poles, couldn't you?
Those poles are big. You know, we could do anything on it, just tell us what you want to do and we'll make it happen.
I'm not trying to frighten anybody.
He sounds like a staff person.
You know, I just want to get some more soccer fields out there, I mean, look at all these kids here, so, you know, I think we'll show, kids, you want some more soccer fields and lights?
(audience cheering) Mr. Mayor, let's just postpone it for a week so we can move this along and we can go from there.
But I think Davis has a good idea, which means have staff meet with, with this gentleman and some of the other, these non-controversial items, you know, staff can make arrangements to get rid of those smaller items, the big ticket items, the pole. Let's wait till, till next agenda, till next week.
So, I'll withdraw my second, second, a new motion just to bring this 100 piece back next year.
Do you want to go ahead and award out these little things to these guys now?
That's fine with me if we can...
Or do we have to reject all of them?
No, we don't have to reject them, we just postpone it.
Okay, we, yes.
I'm sorry, in part of the discussion, is there any talk about what, to find out what the salvage value of the poles is? I think we ought to find that out, if we find, if we're going to use the poles or not use the poles, but let's find out what the salvage value is.
Well, that's what I mean in talking with, if we have agreement with him later on.
Okay.
He might already have it in his bid, that he's reduced the value, but maybe it's more than what we're being offered. And so, if they have a week to talk about that, but that all depends on what we do in the next agenda.
Because he could turn it into scrap iron, you can come on up, sir.
Yes, this is a...
Identify yourself for the record.
Ken Mercurio, Diversified Demolition. This thing was a short fuse, so we didn't have a lot of time to do research. We work with liquidators across the country on various, you know, mechanical equipment, electrical equipment, scrap steel yards, et cetera, and with a little more time, we've got some connections out there. I mean, there's simple things like eBay and Craigslist that would, you know, actually surprise you what, what that might bring, so we just didn't have the time, and obviously they're not ours yet, so we can't put them out on eBay or Craigslist, so to know what they'll bring, but there are avenues on those items that would bring a great deal more salvage than what's being offered.
Okay. We have a motion?
I don't mind awarding the smaller stuff, though. I think just the bleachers and the poles are all I'm hearing in the stage equipment. It's all I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, to continue, I mean...
What are we doing in next week?
Let's, let's go ahead and, I'll withdraw my side. Let's just see if we can get through this, say, let's award number seven, the storage shed.
Wait a minute, let's start at the top.
The field lights you want to wait.
Right.
Reserve stadium seating, let's reject those for now because we might have a different choice. The reserve stadium seating, let's reject those for now, or postpone, not reject.
Postpone them, yeah.
Postpone. Number seven, let's approve. Number eight, let's approve. Number 11, we can approve. Number 12, we can approve. Number 21, we can approve. Number 23, we can approve. I think we have a use for 24, so I would say postpone that.
Yeah.
25, we would postpone. 26, are we sure we're not going to need netting?
Netting, yeah, five bucks.
I heard that's pretty expensive.
Let's keep...
Let's postpone 26, postpone 27. On 28, let's postpone that one and let this gentleman talk about it. And let's just leave it at that, and then that helps, I don't know, just try to move it along a little bit.
Second.
What about the Moana Stadium entry sign?
We're keeping that, it's historical. Get rid of it.
And I'll, and I'll throw in there that we'll, because he came down here, that we ought to, since he's going to have, get the menu boards, Mr. Mayor, that we also award the two, the two stadium seats.
Two rows of two?
Two rows of two to Mr. Henrick, so he can go in there once and get them out.
Okay, now, there's a sign from the old sporting goods store down here?
The Sportsman's sign that's on top of the scoreboard, the, they've just requested that they get that sign back, and Jeff's aware of it.
Yes, sir. We've made arrangements with the family to return that sign to them.
Okay, all right. Have a motion in seconds.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item J six.
Should I move to adjourn?
For the record, Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director. Before you today is a request to approve, review and approve the concept plan for the Moana site that has been, again, completed and accelerated based on council direction. I have to say, and I'm very pleased to say, that I'm happy that the CFA planning company has assisted in this effort. They prepared the plan that you see before you. Actually, they prepared three draft plans first, which then was reviewed on March 29th by a stakeholder group in which Councilor Zadra and Councilor Farazza were in attendance. And at that point, the stakeholder group that is engaged with that site was very involved with how to take those three concept plans and meld them together in agreement to this plan and working with staff, which we as well have, as staff, have concurred that this is, this is a good plan. So, that was on March 29th. It then went to the Recreation and Parks Commission on May 1st, and you see it here before you today. So, again, based on the council direction to get a plan together as well as have the, try to get the fields into play or into the ground by September, which is our goal, and working with the stakeholders, we bring this plan to you today. And just to, to highlight, and this is what I like to, the key thing I'd like to highlight is that the, the area that we're talking about here regarding the fields are in this area right here, and the, this large green area is what we're looking at having developed in September so that we can play on it next year, and we're working with the user groups to do that. The area that you see in pink, this is the site that we're looking at reserving for the Future Aquatics Center and working with the Sierra Nevada, Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics. That's what we have come up with. And then this area... And then this area down here is currently, as you know, the Jack Thai fields. And so, working with the user groups, they've come up with this configuration, and you've had the pack, and I'm not gonna go into detail about each individual amenity. And this concept plan obviously envisions concessions, it envisions, um, naturally, uh, accessibility for persons with disabilities. We have planned for making sure that we have our neighborhood park there that's currently existing. So there are a lot of amenities there that you see, and we've also included, um, the area that we can have a, a children's play area and picnic area. So, as this plan moves along, and as we see the funding coming forward from the user groups, from grants, foundations and that type of thing, we will come back to city council to show you how it can progress and, and how this plan would be implemented, so that you will see, um, it develop over time. What we're asking for you today is to approve this plan so that we can move forward, as I mentioned before, that we, our intention is to come back with, to you on May twenty-third to look at the approval of the, um, inter-local agreement with RTC for diversified demolition. And so, we need, we would like to, and we need to have your approval of this, um, overall site plan, so that we know that you're in agreement with this. If you have changes or want to defer that, we'll take your direction on that. So that concludes my staff report, and there are, as you see, many members of the user groups behind me, and they are here if you have any questions that you'd like to ask them. Thank you.
What's the difference in the ball, baseball fields, uh, from the ones over at Swope?
They are Little League fields. One thing about these is that in working with the user groups, is that the outfield would have, what we're looking at doing is have, uh, fencing that could be moved in and out. So if, if we need to have smaller kids play, we can do that.
So you don't know how they compare to Swope?
Not, not directly.
Okay, you should find out.
Yeah, I will.
Cause I think there's something different, and it doesn't take up as much space.
The size of them. They're flexible, I think that's the best way to say that.
No, no, I agree, we need to do that, but they're not just Little League fields, they might be used for other things, too.
That's true, that's true. But they were, they have been designed as primarily Little League.
Mr. Dort.
Now, what is, what is the plan for the Little League fields? When would, when, when do we anticipate funding for those?
Right now, um, the, we don't have, the staff doesn't have any, uh, plans for funding those at this time. Um, I know that there has been a, a meeting on site with the groups out there. I have had conversations with the Little League group about, um, and I'm familiar with Big League Dreams and some other, um, potential funders for that. Uh, we don't have any plan right now for that as far as to bring to you as a CIP project. If that's council direction to look at funding for that, uh, in the near term, we'd be happy to do that. We have had conversations with the user groups, but to date, we haven't had, we don't have anything in particular to, to bring forward to you for a decision.
And you probably don't anticipate anything in the near future to have funding for that type of...
Not as near as the soccer fields. Not, not as near term as the soccer fields. So, if, if something were to come up as far as a grant or foundation, uh, in fiscal year twelve thirteen, then we certainly would come to you and, or if they, if the group comes forward and says, hey, we have an idea, then we would come forward to you.
What would we anticipate the cost of that is?
What would be the cost of those? I need to get back to you on that, because we're looking at, um, full utilities, concession stand, parking lot, it's not just putting in the green. So...
Rough, I mean, any idea, I mean, if we were...
I wanna go back to our recreation facilities plan, we have an estimate in there, so I can get back to you, counselor. And I'd rather do that than give you a number that's not, um, a correct number.
Thank you.
Also, look, while you're looking at Co, at Swope, look over at the thing that they built over in Sparks.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it's a similar setup like this.
Golden Eagle?
Yeah, the new one they just built.
Golden Eagle out in north, yes.
Whatever it looks like. Mr. Azzi.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, thanks to everybody for moving this forward. I certainly don't think, you thought it would get so big when you put this on the agenda, Sharon jumped in board, now it's getting larger. If we were to move forward and tear down all of this, what would be the, um, where the pool is now? Would that be used for temporary parking? Would that be done gravel and all these things, or would that be paid for parking until they move that? What's the anticipation there?
The way that the, the bid is written right now for Diversified Demolition Company is that they would remove the building and slope the area where the building used to be. It would be, it would be, uh, dirt slash gravel. So, the parking lot that's there now, as far as asphalt, um, we can work with them whether they would take it all out or leave it, leave part of the asphalt there.
Okay.
And that's, um, because part of the asphalt needs to be removed, because it's, if you will, it will be removed, because it's attached to the building. Uh, but, but whether they need to remove the entire parking lot is something that we would work with them on. But the rest of the building, uh, area that was, will be taken out, that will be sloped and, um, left in dirt until such time as, as it is developed.
And I gotta say, I'm, I'm amazed at how big a soccer field was when I first went out there and thought, oh, we could put four of them in where this thing is. Then I actually looked online to how big a soccer field was, I was just amazed at how much those kids have to run all the time. Um, and I think, Mr. Mayor, your discussion at Swope, if we look at it, is, I think those fields are spread out further, because that centerpiece is much larger, so it'd mean they'd all have to push out further.
I think they're about, I think...
That'd be great if they were, cause that's a good...
I think they're about forty feet, these are forty feet more than the other ones over there.
Okay.
Cause they, they tie together.
And then the, uh, the last, to Dwight's concern, and I share his concern, but I understand, and maybe Councilman Sfarza or Zadra will tell me, that, um, this ball field came about from, from the baseball users wanting us to do this, and I think, I think they'll come...
The design, the design, I think, is great, I just, I'm more worried about funding.
I don't disagree with you, and I think that we should do with them, like we're doing with the soccer guys, is if we give you the site, you pay for the fields. And maybe that's what we have, if we, if we, next week, when the, uh, demolition contract comes up, maybe it's in two or three different sections, so that he can start on the Moana site, and if they come up and agree to do all that, it wouldn't be done until they agreed to that. That might be part of that, is so that you, we know going in. And we've already struck our deal, I believe, with the soccer guys upfront about what our share and what their share is. And maybe we just have to make that deal with, with Little League also to see how that would work.
Also, you know, when you bring in the demolition team, he wants to do it all at once.
Right.
He's only gonna come back, cause there's gonna be extra charges to come back and set up.
But I'd hate to not have a plan in place, get into what you're saying, Dwight, is we take that out, and then we're short fields for the next three years while we're waiting. I mean, the fields are operational now, at least to a degree. And I, I think, I heard that the demolition cost for that's one twenty-five, so whether we postpone that piece or not, I would leave that up to the Little League guys.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I bring up Brett? Because, uh, we did meet on the site, and they said, hey, we're, you guys are doing the pool and the stadium itself, we wanna be included in this. Um, I believe Little League, um, they have a vision, and they, I, what we heard from the commitment is that they were gonna go out and ask the foundations and raise money for the fields, so I'd like to hear from you on this.
Brett Scolari, um, on behalf of Reno Continental Little League. Um, when we learned about the Moana piece of this, um, what we said was, we don't wanna lose out on any momentum on the site. If you guys all recall, um, probably three, four years ago, I stood before you, and we contributed seventy-five hundred dollars towards the master planning of this site. So that's why we're here today, is support that. We believe, um, with this master plan, um, that we can get some significant progress on fundraising. We completely understand the city situation. Um, we would like to partner up with the city on it and find, um, some ways that we, we both come to the table on it, but we, we realize that, um, it will be on us to raise the money for these fields. Um, we do have a contingency plan in place. If, if we can't phase the demolition out, and, and it's agreed that we should all do it right now, we would have a contingency plan in place for next year to play with another Little League, while these, we were fundraising and/or these were being constructed. Again, this has all been really fast upon us, um, as far as trying to plan and get our fundraising committee and, and things together in that nature, so... But I, I share the concern. I don't want to be out fields three years, and we, we wouldn't have the intention to do that. We, we think that this is an easy sell, not only to the folks in our league, but to the folks who have had kids and grandkids play in this Reno Continental Little League for fifty-some-odd years. And we think the community can get behind it, um, when you have something like this to show 'em. So, that's where we're coming from right now. We, we're wholeheartedly in support of master planning the site and partnering up with the city and, and making this, as, as we pointed out to staff and, uh, Councilwomen Zadra and, um, Sfaraza, the baseball facility could be a revenue generator for the city as well. Um, the cities of Manteca, Mather, other California cities, they're building these con, these regional parks that have the, the fields that can house these, um, travel ball tournaments, and they're doing it for a reason. It's a revenue producer for the city, and it brings people here. Folks that are in those travel ball leagues have said, why doesn't Reno have a, have a park that we could come and have a tournament in? And you got twenty-two acres in the middle of the city to do something pretty special, so, um, it's not only us, but it could also be a huge opportunity for the city as far as revenue production, um, we believe. So, that's where we come from. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, this is actually for all three of the groups. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, um, with our CD Attorney's Office to help the three major partners that we've got here. That's SNICA, um, for the aquatics piece, as well as the, the Little League and the, the soccer groups. It's pretty clear that they need to be one unified team for this, this master plan. But when it comes to the individual fundraising and what they need from us individually, that, that's just a smidge indifference. So we need to come up with an agreement for each of the three of them. And as we've talked about in the past for the pools, um, they've expressed to us, SNICA has expressed to us for a couple of years, that until they have something to show, that being a lease, a right to have that, um, so it's, it's a, a lease on, you know, fulfillment, that they'll have their five or six or whatever the acreage is, I forget, um, for fifty or ninety-nine years type of a thing. They can go out and do their fundraising under this umbrella, and we've talked about the financial mechanism where they'll each have their dedicated resource, um, so that if they raise the money, it will go to their operations. So the pool money won't go to the ball field or, or vice versa type of a thing. Um, and so we're gonna try and work through the rest of those details tomorrow to help them get into the position that they need to be in to go out and do their financing, to bring forward the, the products that will actually go here.
Julie, are these ball, these ball fields, baseball fields, are they regulation for softball tournaments, or is this just for Little League?
This is, uh, again, for the record, Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Director. Um, this is for Little League, uh, fields, these are Little League fields. And one thing I, I do want to, I do wanna highlight about that, because it, it was brought up by Mr. Scolari. I did talk to Steve King today, who is the South Reno Babe Ruth, um, leader, and there is a Babe Ruth field here now. And he, um, told me, and he wanted to assure me today, he couldn't make it here today, but he wanted to make sure, and this is why I'm bringing it up, that if the demolition occurs this summer, that they have talked to Washoe County, and, uh, Washoe County will accommodate them at the South Reno complex. So they will not be put out, um, by any demolition. But to answer your question specifically, these are Little League fields.
Well, I think we need to know whether we could play softball, or we could play, uh, the other leagues, too, cause you could put the fences inside for Little League.
Mr. Mayor, unless you, unless you do removable mounds, you're not gonna, you're not, you're not gonna be able to do softball.
Yeah, we are softball...
We might have to look at it, because, I mean, just to tie this to Little League.
We have our softball fields at, as you know, at Rancho San Rafael, the complex, we, we play those there, so...
How many fields are there?
There are four, four fields that we use. But, but again...
And Idlewild's used, too.
In Idlewild, exactly.
Idlewild, we got three fields at Idlewild.
Idlewild has three fields at Idlewild. In fact, we're bringing back an agreement to you, um, next week on that, we have a tournament coming into town.
Cause there's a lot of softball tournaments that go around every year.
Absolutely, absolutely. So... But I did wanna tell you that...
You want the list?
That South Reno Babe Ruth is good.
You know better than that, dude.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Overall, I like the concept. And I just gave John a copy of the, uh, pools over at, uh, Sparks, the walk-in pool and stuff like that, and we need to start looking and working, and see if we can't come up with some kind of design, because there's some foundations these people can go to, and we could help them go into these foundations and get this done. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, um, I would like to make a motion, if we, if we could, to approve the conceptual plan, and I, I just wanna point out a couple things. As all the user groups have come together, uh, they've worked very hard on this, uh, Richard with, uh, Great Base, and also the, the baseball folks, everyone, the aquatics folks coming together. But also, I wanna point out that Ken from Diversified, he's out there doing the Moana Lane Extension, he's being shy about this, but he's, um, donated fifty thousand dollars towards this project. And also has worked with Castaway and others to bring down the cost of that bid, and I, I didn't, uh, he didn't elaborate that on today, but I, I suppose that'll come back to us, um, on the twenty-third. But I wanna point that out, he's really gone out there, um, and, uh, done tremendous, worked with all the user groups to, to try and make this work for the city, so we can move forward with this plan. So, I just wanna thank Ken for all the hard work, Castaway, Waste Management, everyone who's come to the table and, uh, really helped with, um, getting this bid down, um, on the demolition. Um, I, I sincerely appreciate it, and I, I think this is, um, as I said, a private, public-private partnership. We're gonna do the demolition, and the user groups have to come to the table and, and, and make this a miracle, a true miracle, with the baseball fields and the soccer fields and the, and the swim folks. But I think this gives them the foundation to be able to go out there and raise the money. We've seen what's happened with soccer already, um, and how far they've come, and I have a lot of faith in, in baseball and the, the aquatics groups, too, that, that will get this done through the community.
Does aquatics have anything you wanna say today? We've heard from everybody else, you might as well come on up, too. Yes, and I am working on it.
For the record, Michael Ginsburg, Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics. We're, uh, all behind this project here. We've been working, as you know, for five years, ever since Moana did close as an aquatics facility. The aquatics groups are very, very underserved. I was trying to sit back there and think, you know, it's basically like the soccer people only having one or two fields in town to play on, or the baseball kids only having one or two fields. It's, we're shoving all these kids into northeast and northwest pools, and then Idlewild during the summer. So we are absolutely behind this. We'd like to see the long-term lease on that project, so we can, like, the counselors were saying, that we can go forward and get funding. We've actually been, this is actually, when we first started, we thought it was gonna be an easy slam dunk, five years ago. The economy was great, and then all of a sudden, it started to tank, and it's taken us forever to do this. But within the first part of this year, everything's kinda coming together, you know, Jessica pushing through and Sharon pushing through with this, this whole rehabilitation on this project here, and then we've also actually had funders coming to us interested in this process, so... We've actually moved forward, and we're actually seeking a architectural firm out of California that's, does aquatics, and they're gonna actually give us a solid bid of what this would cost to actually build the aquatics facility. The funders are behind it, we're very excited about this, and we're hoping, I really do hope, that we can make some big announcements in the fall of this year, that we're actually gonna start moving dirt, so, we're not far behind.
I know of a couple of foundations that are talking to you and stuff like that, and they're wanting them to have a lease, so that they know that they're gonna build it and things like that. And that's why I sent the drawings over to John, uh, on the one out in Sparks, cause that's a pretty neat setup for some of the seniors and some of the veterans coming home.
Yeah, what we're looking for, you know, is, it's gonna fill everybody's needs. I've always said that, once we walk away from this, I don't wanna say, I wish we would've, we should've, we could've, how can we didn't do this? It's all gonna be included, and this will be a state-of-art facility, very efficient with the geothermal, that's exactly why this needs to go at Moana. The geothermal piece, the solar piece, we're, I'm very excited about it, once again.
I admire your gumption and stand with it.
I'm gonna stay with it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, we'll be seeing those three different kinds of agreements come back to us, you know, what we need for Little League, and what we need for the flat fields, the soccer use, and for the pool use. Those are gonna come back to us, so that they can hit the ground running and, and do, begin their fundraising.
When are they gonna come to us?
Jonathan tells me, if we're successful in tomorrow's meeting, that it's a pretty simple thing for him.
Oh, John, Jonathan really went goosey there.
Yeah.
Mr. Sfarza, you wanted to make a motion?
I made the motion to approve the conceptual plant, plan, and along with Diversified, I feel terrible. CFA has donated all their time and effort, Mr. Mayor, and worked with the user groups, I don't know if they're here to... user groups. I don't know if they're here today, but they donated all this to the city. So, I just want to say thank you to CFA. There's so many people have been a part of this, and I have stepped up to the plate. I'm sure that I'm missing Atlantis, Peppermill. There's several groups, Western Nevada, all these people have really come together to make this a reality, and I hope we get that out there, because they're continuing to come forward. So, my motion would be to move forward with the conceptual plan. I believe the demolition's going to be coming to us in the budget on the 15th, and the actual moving forward with the RTC on the joint or on the 23rd. Is that the process? So, that would be part of my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Sharon, am I missing anything?
Yeah, I think we got it all, except thanks for all the little tykes and the older ones, and Mom and Dad for bringing all the kids out. I know that it was a scramble getting them from school, and that you're off to a couple of other of your games. So, thank you for coming and showing us your excitement and support.
I have a motion, second discussion. Mr. Dort.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's no secret that I've had my concerns about the plan for the site. And my main concern has been really maximizing the use on that site and leveraging. I really feel strongly that that frontage on Moana is very valuable property, and we could have leveraged that to really spark the development for the fields behind it. I am going to support the motion on this plan, but I still think that there's a possibility in the future to maximize the use of that and do some sort of development that fronts Moana. I don't think soccer fields fronting Moana is the best use for that site. I think that we could have leveraged that and put some money, some additional funds, through some sort of a private-public partnership, and really maximize what we could get out of the rest of that site with some developers. The times are tough right now. You're not going to get a developer to come in and put the investment into that piece of property right now. You can't, I mean, they couldn't get the loans or make it happen on something right now, so it would be down the road. And possibly, it could be something that could come about down the road. But I really thought that maximizing that and getting that money to help with building the pool and building the fields would have been great. And it has nothing against soccer. I mean, I'm actually a little discouraged to find out that the county's not moving forward with the flat fields out. Instead, I've been pushing for that for several years now, and this is the first I heard that that wasn't part of the plan for that to happen. So, it's not, nothing against the soccer fields, but I just really felt we could have maximized and really could have, that money would have sparked the building of the baseball fields right away. So, that's been my position on that, but I will support it.
You ought to check with the county and see what they did with all that money they were supposed to...
I don't know. I just found out that they're not.
The bulldog, I mean, Mr. Dort will find out. All right, now we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Say thank y'all. Hey, Scolari, don't be using your kids for displays anymore.
We have a very important date with the Rangers right now.
You and the guy back there that's got a grin on his face that's walking out with a beard down.
We have an important date with the Rangers right now at 5:30, so I have to go get them warmed up.
Go clean their clock, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Where are we?
J-9.
Oh, charter review. Did I hear? I think my mother's calling me. Would you take care of that?
J-9. All right. For the record, Cadence Mutievich, Assistant City Manager. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, you have before you today a recommendation from your charter review committee on a possible November 2012 general election advisory ballot question regarding the manner in which city council members are elected. And council, I'm certain, will recall the previous history on this item, and that you directed to have the charter review committee consider this item and forward to you for your consideration a recommendation on ballot question language. I will note that a number of the charter review committees were here earlier today to answer questions, and it's entirely a result of my schedule that they were unable to stay. We didn't anticipate me being detained in Carson City for as long as I was, so my apologies to them. And I will do my best to answer any questions that you may have about the process. They did discuss this on a number of occasions, gave it quite a bit of consideration and deliberation, looked at various options, and before you today is their recommendation. It's in the staff report. If council desires, I'm happy to read it into the record, if you like, or if, given the hour, you'd prefer to just ask questions.
Everybody will have a chance to read it on their ballot, I think.
If we could go to questions. How does this proposed language differ or is similar to the language that was proposed by Senator Leslie previously, and the language that Councilman Haseff had proposed when we were having this discussion a year ago?
It is somewhat different. Councilwoman, if you'll give me just a second. I have that language in my binder here. I'll pull it out. I believe that the language that was included in Senate Bill 304 from last legislative session read that, "Shall the charter of the city of Reno be amended to provide for a ward system for election of council members, providing that each council member must be elected in a general election by only the registered voters of the ward that he or she seeks to represent?" I believe that that was the language from the bill. And then, what Councilman Haseff had suggested, I apologize, I don't have that exact language in front of me, did include more of, was more actually of the explanation of what a yes vote or a no vote, was more direction on that. And so, I don't have that exactly, as I said, in front of me. Staff did prepare a number of alternative, or provide to the committee a number of alternatives for their consideration, including the language that was last posed to the voters in the early 1990s. They considered that. They considered some other recommended ballot language that I had proposed to this council beforehand. And I will tell you that they were concerned that the language of the question itself be fairly brief, easily, you know, somewhat easily interpreted by the general population. And that is why they also felt compelled to craft the explanation that's included with their recommendation, and that that recommendation, excuse me, that that explanation referenced the current system so that voters would know what, the way that the system is established currently and what that change would be. But they were very concerned that the language, that it not be a lengthy question.
And do we have the authority or ability, if we do put this as a referendum question, to us, the city, draft that explanation language, the yes and no vote language, or is that required to be by a committee that the registrar or voters develops?
It's a little bit of both, Councilwoman. The council does not craft the pro and con language. You nominate persons to serve on those committees. You forward those names to the registrar, and then the registrar gives direction to those committees, and they prepare that pro and con language.
Okay, go ahead.
And it did, it just came out on a tweet, actually, but I think it's different for the city of Reno in the sense that, how this affects other jurisdictions, a candidate in the primary who receives 51% would then essentially be elected. Their name would move on to the general. Right now, under our current structure, the way it is, that wouldn't be the case, because that person still has to run citywide. Is that correct?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. There are other charters in the state of Nevada that have that provision. The city of Reno's charter does not include that provision. So, there is no automatic election. You have to go through both the primary and the general.
And then, on the language itself, Cadence, is this one that requires, is it just simple majority?
Yes, Councilwoman, the question, I believe, would be, it is an advisory question. So, yes, it would be a simple majority. And if the council is amenable to this ballot question, we would seek your direction at a later date when the charter committee has completed their review of all of their recommendations, and would come to you with a recommendation on how to implement those. If you would want to include in a bill draft with other charter changes, a somewhat presumptive, presuming that the answer to this question was yes, then the bill would propose to make those changes. If the answer to that was no, then perhaps we would withdraw that bill. And so, I think it may be a bit premature to make those recommendations right now until we know what the other changes that they're going to be bringing forward to you. And they're finalizing that process, and I anticipate bringing those back to you in June. But there may be some strategic decisions to be made about how we go, you know, do we want to include this in that bill? Do we want to have it as a separate bill so that they run on parallel tracks and this doesn't hang that up?
I don't think I would raise one of our bill drafts on this. If it passes, someone will certainly introduce it for us.
And then, Cadence, was this unanimous by the charter review committee?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I'm prepared, Mr. Mayor, to move forward. I mean, this way, we set up the committee for their recommendation. It's time to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, at least from my perspective, to me, the language doesn't really tell the whole story.
Yeah, that's...
So, I mean, when you look at the prior questions, or the way it was put, to me, you should have the comparison. So, for example, shall the current method to elect five ward city council members, and explain that current method, where all the voters in the city may vote on those council members in the general election be changed so that each council member can only be elected by the registered voters in the ward and not the city at large? So, someone has the comparison. When you read the question, "Shall the current method elect five city council members in the general election?" It doesn't, most people, I don't think, know that they can, it doesn't tell that story, that right now, I get to vote for everybody.
You're correct, Councilman. The question itself does not, and assuming you're looking in...
But it's in the explanation.
It is in the explanation.
But who reads the explanation? That, to me, is, most people, I don't think, read the explanation.
Okay. And I hesitate to speak for the members of the committee, and it's unfortunate that my schedule meant that they couldn't be here for this conversation. But in their discussion, my recollection is that they did believe that people read the explanation. I would be happy to bring back your concerns to them, that perhaps not all voters read that, and so you would like it to be reflected in the question. And that's the very reason that we're bringing this particular piece forward to you now, so that we do have time to go back to them before they conclude their review. So...
Yeah, because I certainly, I mean, they obviously did the work, so I'd like to hear from them. So, could we continue this to the next meeting? Would that, because this is not time-sensitive, is it?
Could I ask this, Pierre, if you're willing to do this? I know I am, maybe other people are, but maybe have a meeting with them, because at our next agenda meeting, they might not be able to be here. Why not, see if we can schedule a meeting?
A joint meeting?
Of the city council, and that, where we can have this back-and-forth discussion of all those members, and come up with something we can vote for at the end. Because I'd hate to have to say it's in our next agenda, and only one or two of the people can show up. This is very important. I wouldn't mind having a special meeting, even if it's at night, just to talk about this one issue and listen to all their concerns and comments, because I don't know if anyone from the council went, I didn't give any testimony. I want to hear what their thoughts were. But now, it's give and take about what we think, because I agree with you, Pierre. Could easily say, "Shall the current method of Reno residents electing all the city council members be modified?"
Right. Shane, so you just got denied, you just got denied the right to vote for four people, really is what it comes down to.
And I think that that conversation, and I realize what they say, but have that discussion with those people. And if they agree, then I'll go with them. If they disagree, frankly, I might still go with them. That's why we had them there. But I hate to just one-way say, "This is what we want to do."
Yeah, that's okay.
So, however you want to...
Well, then, I'd like to see some language, Mr. Haseff, that you had put together during the last session of the legislature, so we could look at that also.
And that's basically what I just said, what I just proposed. Somebody has the comparison.
Right. And so, I think that you should get that to Cadence, if you would, if you've still got a copy of it, and we could look at that also.
Are we completely just rejecting the old language that said, "Shall the five city council members representing wards continue to be voted upon by the registered voters of the city at large in the general election?"
I don't think we reject. That's one of the things I'd like to have a conversation with the committee about, because that tells the story too.
Right.
Well, I think that you need to tell the story in the question, because I would, the way I look at it, the people that are on the charter committee are probably the people who read the ballot question.
Right.
So, they're probably, not as subjective as we think that the general public would be. I read them, but I think, but again, you know, because I've sat in this seat. But I think the general public might have a different opinion than that charter committee, because otherwise, they wouldn't have volunteered to be on that committee, because it was serious to them. So, good reason to have that meeting.
Yeah, and I'm happy to, I have the minutes from that conversation when Councilman Haseff, I think you actually talked about it, and then Councilwoman Sveraza paraphrased for you a little bit. So, we can pull that and have that available for that joint meeting. I would suggest that perhaps that committee meets each Monday from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And so, certainly, you know, we've already...
We can't do it this Monday.
Right.
Then we can do it the Monday after.
We've already set the agenda for next week's meeting, but certainly, we could...
Well, if they're normally there, honestly, I don't want to put them out. If that's what they've scheduled for their time, I would be respectful of their time, that we should probably meet Monday from 4:00 to 6:00. That's my thought. I don't know, not this coming Monday, but...
But the next Monday.
Probably the next one.
21st? I can do it.
Whatever we, okay. Well, let's have you just try to arrange that, because with the timeframe, we could even do it the following Monday, maybe if Dwight had to be here, so...
Yeah, we can look at both. The following Monday is a holiday, and we had actually...
Which Monday?
The 28th is Memorial Day, I believe.
Yep.
So, we had intended for their meetings to be concluding either the 21st or the first Monday in June, again anticipating bringing back to you a report on June 13.
So, let's shoot for the 21st then, see what happens.
What time, 4:00?
4:00 p.m.
Any other discussion? Tell them at the charter committee, I hear they brought it up that I'm resigning or something. Tell them, do they have a crystal ball? Is there something wrong with me?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was what I requested, that they look at how it goes if something happens to the mayor. There's two different things in the charter now, how it, what works. And I wanted to simplify that. There's one section that says, "The vice mayor steps up." The other one says, "The council appoints someone." And I think it should just be clarified, even with, maybe there's a special election, or, I asked them just to look at that too.
Okay, because they were...
It's unclear.
They were thinking I was retiring or sick, and they didn't make it clear.
No, it had nothing to do with you, Mr. Mayor.
I got a little hoarseness for sinuses, but other than that, I'm full of spirit.
And we explained that to them, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And where do they meet?
In the caucus room.
Good. Is that a motion on that, or do we need a motion?
I don't know, do we have to have a motion to schedule another meeting?
No, 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 never mind. Forget I brought that up.
It's not agendized that we have a motion to schedule another meeting.
So, we can do this in June now. All right.
Public comment.
Thank you. Public comment. Anybody?
Mr. President?
Wait a minute, don't rush me. That's my favorite... That's my favorite motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion.